And everybody and welcome to the City Commission Conference Meeting this March 2nd, 2021. Thank you all for participating. As you all know, the city of Fort Lauderdale is hosting its Commission meetings of both a virtual and in-person format. Any member of the public that's interested in speaking before the Commission virtually is required to complete the virtual speaker card. Any member of the public that is interested in speaking before the Commission in person may sign up here at the back of the room and using the virtual speaker card or by using the virtual speaker card. Due to COVID-19 distance requirements, there'll be very limited seating available. Therefore, we are encouraging people to participate virtually. The public will be able to listen to and view Commission meetings at www.fortlauderdale.gov/FLTV, also on YouTube, youtube.com/cityoffortlauderdale, all spelled out, as well as on Comcast Channel 78 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. So, to speak on an agenda item, please click on the link below. That's bit.bit.ly/virtualccmeetings. I'll repeat that. That's bit.bit.ly/virtualccmeetings. Okay, so today we have quite a few interesting topics to discuss. If you don't mind, folks, if we could do the Commission reports after we get through the initial agenda so that the folks that are waiting here in the room or online can have their opportunity to speak. So, let's see. Start out with business one, downtown master plan. Chris?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission, this will be an update on the downtown master plan. It's going to be presented by Anthony Farhado.
Okay, Mr. Farhado, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the Commission. Anthony Farhado with Sustainable Development.
Is your microphone on?
Can you hear me? Hit the lights on, so.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thank you. So, as you may recall, there were codifications made to the downtown master plan that were a result of feedback that we received from the Commission and some of our neighbors in the city. We were also asked to, and this occurred on November 5th of 2020 when we adopted those recommendations. We were also asked to go back and look at other aspects of the downtown master plan. And this presentation is to update you on that. Those include the parking requirement in the RAC City Center, the transition zones and how they're measured, building tower separation requirements, and then there was a discussion regarding wind studies. So with that, I would introduce Ella Parker. She's the Urban Design and Planning Manager with Sustainable Development, and she's going to do the presentation and go through it slide by slide.
Very good. Thank you. Is Ella appearing on Zoom?
Yeah, good afternoon. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Let me know if everyone can see that okay?
We're good.
Okay, wonderful. So like Anthony mentioned, if you all recall, we had come to you in November, November 5th, to adopt the downtown master plan codifications. And as a follow-up, the Commission requested the four bullets that you see below: revisiting or analyzing the parking requirement in the Regional Activity City Center, looking at the transition zone and where it's measured from, looking at the building tower separation requirement, and also looking at analyzing wind study impacts. So as far as the parking requirement, staff analyzed the requirements that we have on existing development projects, and we came up with a number of approximately 1.3 parking spaces per unit on average. If you take out some outliers, the backup report that you have as part of your Commission Agenda Report actually has the specific projects listed. We do believe that one parking space per unit is an appropriate number to look at. This is something that the Downtown Civic Association recommended, and hence that was the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board. We also, since we looked at the city center, which is the area outline in blue where my cursor is following, can you see the cursor?
Yep, we can.
Okay, wonderful. And I also wanted to point out that because the Regional Activity Center, Arts and Science District also had the exempt requirement, we thought it was fair to look at both these boundaries, the CC and the AS. And so, we are recommending that the one parking space per unit minimum for residential in both these districts is appropriate, but we also want to suggest that qualifying projects in these areas, since parking was previously exempt, may request a parking reduction through a site plan level one. That would be an administrative review process, subject to code criteria and guidelines from Transit Oriented Development that the City Commission approved back in 2014. Why we believe that's important is because that maintaining that level of flexibility always assists in terms of those qualifying projects that could potentially result in some parking that might be a little bit less than the one space per unit. But again, we would come back to you with some qualifying criteria such as proximity to existing parking structures, utilizing those TOD standards, et cetera. So that's something that would be back in front of you if you are okay with that directive.
Wait, before you go on, I feel like you're recommending that we, right now, we have no parking requirement. And what you're suggesting is that we establish a parking minimum of one parking space per unit, but then you feel that staff should be able to waive that or minimize it based on criteria that it's up to them, and it will never come to the Commission? And I'm not comfortable with that. Because would it be subject to call-up? At site level one, it's not subject to call-up. So basically, we have established a new rule, but then we allow staff to ignore it if staff decides on its own whether or not it's appropriate to maintain the one parking space per unit. Do you want to respond to that, Anthony?
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's a fair point. We could certainly consider a call-up process as part of that criteria. Again, like I mentioned, we certainly would come back in front of all of you and the public process in front of the Planning and Zoning Board and the Commission in adapting the standards. So that criteria would be something that we would work on in making the ordinance changes and present in front of you. So you would have input on that process. But certainly, if one of those points is to make that a call-up, that's certainly something that we can include.
All right. So before we would pass this, you would have established those mitigating criteria so we can at least determine whether or not that criteria is adequate. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Mayor, can I chime in? So I like, I think we're aligned on that. I like the flexibility for parking, whether it's for different possible uses and so forth, and I like your idea of the call-up provision. So I think that makes sense. And you're saying for the, given that flexibility and criteria.
Right. They would define what those criteria are, and so we'll figure it. We'll see what that is before we pass any new ordinances.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Thanks.
Great. Okay, Ella, keep going.
Okay, thank you. So the next item that we looked at was the downtown transition zones. If you all remember, these were incorporated into the code to ensure a transition in height from the downtown to our surrounding less intensive zoning districts. The transition zone is currently measured from the downtown RAC boundary, and it generally falls like within the center line of the right-of-way. The Tarpon River Neighborhood Association made a request that it should be measured from the property line so that the right-of-way would not count as part of the transition depth. So this original request was actually presented to us prior to the extensive communications and consensus building with the neighbors in respect to the changes to the character area map. And those changes, in effect, reduce the impact of building heights on the boundary of the downtown RAC, especially in those areas that became urban neighborhoods. And I'll show you a map right now. From about 30 stories to six stories. So you can see in this lighter yellow area, for example, right here next to Tarpon River, which used to be orange, the maximum height there was 30 stories. And now again, it's six by right, 12 by conditional use. Now, there are portions of the neighborhood that obviously the remaining character area of the downtown, near downtown, still exists. However, that area still will continue to have the transition zone boundary. It is also in close proximity to the bridge, and there's sort of this great change there and a recognition that we are nearby the actual downtown center here. So we also have underlying zoning that's a transitional zoning here, and there are some criteria in terms of compatibility that almost serve as another layer of protection. So we think that in combination with the adopted transition zones, the step backs that we adopted also in the code, that the existing compatibility criteria does address those requests. So we believe that it should stay as adopted.
What does the Commission think? I guess what the Tarpon River folks are saying is, if you measure it from the edge of the property line, it pushes the development further away as opposed to it being so close to the, the height being closer to the road. Because if you measure it from the center of the road, it gives the development, it gives the development the opportunity to be closer to the edge of the property line. I kind of like what the Tarpon River people are saying. But anyone else have any comments on this?
Ella, can you walk us through when you look at the property line versus right-of-way median, like pros cons?
I mean, if we were to take another look at this, I do believe there would be some additional impacts to property rights. You know, we went through an extensive process, obviously, building those character areas and finding that consensus to date. And so I think that there might be some implications, not just in this area, but if you look at the map, we actually added through that process, we added some infold areas that the transition zone really didn't even exist, and made it sort of more uniform so that it protects every neighborhood. So again, it's a matter of, if you look at, for example, Federal Highway and 7th as in the example of Tarpon, 7th and 4th, those are wider boulevards. So in effect, they're already sort of, you know, there is additional sort of buffering there. But we would also have to look at some of these other areas and how it would impact those property owners. So I do think additional outreach and stakeholder input and just, you know, some additional detailed work would have to happen if that was the case. So we do truly believe that so much time was spent on bringing, you know, significant changes. Because again, if you think about it, the 30-story heights that got changed on the bulk of the neighborhood, which is that, you know, the impacted areas right here, as well as along Sailboat Bend, Victoria Park, I mean, those really do contribute to a transition on their own. And that's why we felt that it was fair to leave them as is based on that consensus building.
Okay, thanks.
And I also agree with staff and what Ella's saying in terms of keeping this based on the new transition zones.
Well, what she's saying is that when you start to, you start to measure the height of a building, the maximum height, it would be, and how close it is to the adjacent zoning district, you measure it from the center of the road as opposed to the edge of your property.
I just think the unintended consequences to property and property rights is going to be bigger than just staying with what we have.
Okay. Anyone else have any other comments? Okay, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So the next area that we wanted to address with you was the building tower separation. And this measurement, if you recall, is intended to provide for a horizontal spacing distance between building towers, and this is to protect access to light and air and views. And so, the adopted code states that the minimum distance separation between building towers is 60 feet, and that each property owner is responsible for a minimum of the 30 feet on their property. So when you're adjacent to an abutting lot under separate ownership, you're responsible for your 30-foot separation. We did study this as far as, you know, remaining lots throughout the city that might have some situations where an existing building might come a little bit closer. And there are a few. There wasn't a significant amount. But it is our recommendation that this requirement also remain as adopted. I know that some folks brought up the concern that maybe, you know, if the adjacent tower is closer than the 30 feet, perhaps this should be approved by the City Commission as far as an additional request, similar as we have for the other dimensional standards. So that's certainly up to the City Commission, but our recommendation would be that the requirement remain as adopted.
Does anyone have any comments with regard to that? I happen to think that what you're saying has a lot of merit, that if we're talking about new construction on two adjacent lots, that they each are responsible for their 30-feet separation. But if you already have an existing building based on previous zoning code, let's say that building is 20 feet away from the edge of their property, now you're creating a situation where the adjacent property owner only has to go 30 feet. So now you have a 50-foot separation. And if they're only 10 feet away, now you have a 40-foot separation. Is that the type of, you know, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of construction that's already been built here in the city. So wouldn't that not actually frustrate the intent here in terms of trying to maintain building separation if we allow the future builder to just be responsible for 30 feet instead of the balance of what's left in 60 feet? Does anyone else have any thoughts on this? Do you see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. Are you asking me, or would you like the Commission, the rest of the Commission to chime in?
Commissioner Maritas, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I understand what you're saying, but I think, once again, we're penalizing the future business or developer as opposed to the person who didn't do 30 feet setback. So I think we should just keep it as is also.
Well, I'm trying to think in terms of what's best for the community as opposed to what's best for the individual property owner. For the community, it makes sense that our buildings are separated for a lot of reasons. If we build them right up close to each other, we're defeating the whole purpose of this. So do we look at it from a community point of view, or we look at it from an individual property owner's point of view? I mean, they buy a piece of property knowing what they, I mean, every time a developer comes to me and says, "What can I build on this site?" I tell them. And they don't have to buy the property if they don't think their building could be situated such that the separation would be sufficient. I don't know. That's just my opinion. I get what you're saying.
I appreciate it. I just think it's giving one person an advantage over the other. I just think, keep it equal. Everyone's responsible for their own 30 feet. If they want to demolish it and build 30 feet back, then they can do that too.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments?
I do. Ella, I have a question for you, because in the recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, if an adjacent tower is closer than 30 feet to the site under consideration, and an applicant cannot maintain the 60 feet, doesn't that application have to go to the City Commission then for approval?
So right now, the code, the way that the code is written, you're only responsible for maintaining your 30 feet. What was suggested by some was that maybe this is an added request that's added under other requests, like if you don't meet dimensional standards. And in this case, it would be if your adjacent building is closer to your building, and so you cannot maintain the full 60-feet separation, but you can maintain the 30-foot separation on your own lot. That that would be something that would also be subject to City Commission request for review, or subject to City Commission agenda. Like I said, we didn't want to, you know, make that recommendation unless the City Commission wishes to consider that because of the fact that we did analyze, you know, some of the sites. There weren't that many. And then we haven't really even had that many examples of projects, just a few. And staff usually does work with applicants to find alternate ways to mitigate some of the effects of an existing condition such as that. But if that is the Commission's request, that's certainly something that you could consider.
And you did hit upon my next question, actually, so, which was going to be, how often has this issue arisen? And you're saying that you really haven't run into this too much?
Not too much. There were a couple of projects that I can think of, but not too many that couldn't meet this requirement. And in the sites that we analyzed, there are a few sites that will be impacted by this, but not a significant amount.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Keep going.
Okay. So lastly, the wind study, this is something that the City Commission requested that staff analyze in terms of concerns that were raised by stakeholders regarding effects of wind from tall buildings on the built environment. So staff engaged the Planning Advisory Services of the American Planning Association to assist with analyzing what other cities do. And the resulting analysis indicated that cities studied, and keep in mind, many of these cities that were studied, even though we asked for a similar context, were larger cities, some of similar size than us, but mostly in the northern climates, cities such as Toronto and Boston. There were some other cities in California, San Francisco, Oakland. So those cities generally use a variety of approaches to mitigate potential wind effects of buildings. Some of the studies actually, or some of the effects that they study are also mitigated by things such as Fort Lauderdale adapted, which includes, you know, floor plate sizes of buildings, maximum building heights, the fact that we have the tower separation, podium heights also tend to kind of help break down winds. But again, there's sort of a lot of unknowns as well. So for example, in colder climates, the cold air contributes to the wind discomfort, whereas in South Florida, that might be a little bit different. There's also considerations for things like proximity to large bodies of water. So for example, perhaps, you know, we heard things like buildings on the beach might actually experience a little bit more of an impact than in our downtown. We do obviously have a corridor of the river running through, but it's not quite clear, you know, what that is. So we also reached out to RWGI. It's a company that deals with wind analysis, and they've actually done some studies throughout the world really, but in South Florida in particular as well, on behalf of clients. So they do things like wind analysis and tunnel tests to determine wind pressure loads for exterior structures to meet the Florida Building Code. We're in a high-velocity hurricane-prone zone, so those types of things, you know, in terms of materials, you have to do these studies sometimes to analyze the type of materials and cladding that you're putting on buildings. But the similar type of studies can be used to determine where wind may impact pedestrian experience. So we have invited an expert speaker with us today. His name is Hanjing Wu, and he's from RWGI. He has experience in this. So he's here to sort of, from a technical perspective, perhaps help address some additional questions. And I think he's a panelist, so city moderator, if we could get Mr. Hanjing Wu part of our meeting in case there are questions for him. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Is Mr. Wu on the line?
Yes.
Hi, welcome. Where are you speaking from?
Yeah, I'm in a city called Gulf, just one hour outside of Toronto.
Well, thank you for participating in our program. We appreciate it. So just initially, you've done an analysis of the type of urban core that we have so far. Have you been able to identify any potential trouble spots that we need to think about going forward? Any suggestions how we might modify our building codes to avoid the kind of impact of wind that's often talked about in the urban environment?
Yes. As Ella said, we have a lot of experiences doing project in Florida or everywhere in the world. And then typically, when we look at the wind impact, you have to look at local wind climate, and how windy is this place, and what kind of wind you got. And also, exposure is important. Like you are waterfront, you get a big body of ocean to the east. So if the building is on the beach, of course, it will be windy. If you are in downtown, probably the problem is not that serious, but still, if you are on the eastern side of the downtown, let's say around the federal highways, you still have a very good exposure to the east wind. And we do at least two kinds of studies. One is very typical, is to look at the cladding loads or structural loads on the building. That's required by the building code. Like a city doesn't need to do anything specific about that. And then the developer, they have motivation to do this kind of study, to make the loads very accurate. And also, in most of cases, they can save a lot of money when you compare the loads we provide to the code requirement. So that's one study. But we can use the same model to study the wind effect on people. Like people can be on sidewalks, at entrances, or on auto patio, on the ground level, or maybe on the roof. So it depends on the activity you are involved. They will have a different requirement for the wind speed and the frequencies. We do this kind of studies all the time. And actually, we did many in downtown for Fort Lauderdale in the past. So we have the data, like where the city will be windy, and then how tall the building has to be to create that kind of problem. We do have some background knowledge. And also, in the past, we have a lot of experience with working with the cities directly. Like the city of Toronto, we are working with them now. And they have, they call it, tons of reference for the city planning. So if the buildings are higher than certain level in the downtown area or in the suburban area, then you need to do a wind study. And then we can write a document, we are working on a document with the city, actually, is to just say, if the buildings are higher than It's just say, if the buildings are higher than certain level, you had to do wind tunnel study, or you had to do a computer simulation. Sometimes if the building is not significant, you can even do a, we call it desktop analysis, just from the experience. Like because I'm, I've been seeing many, many buildings and the other people in my company, they all have experience. So if I look at the building and say, yeah, it's only three story, probably we don't need to do wind study. Or the wind impact will be minimum, a letter may be good enough. But if you are building, say, hundred story building somewhere in downtown in, for the lot there, and of course, yeah, you, you are suggesting you had to go to the highest level for wind tunnel study. So they are different, the level of wind study and the different requirement, it, it all depends on climate, location, exposure. And of course, the separation between the towers and then the podiums others can play a role too. We, we can help to set up a guidelines for cities. And actually, we are doing, as I said, for Toronto in city of Edmonton, Halifax. And then we constantly work with the city of San Francisco, Oakland, and Boston. And now also I worked with the hot climate like Hong Kong, Dubai with the cities too. And in Hong Kong, Dubai, they have a kind of issues from both sides. One is sometimes it's too windy and then sometimes they complain the wind is not enough. So people will complain about air quality, air ventilation, and also the thermal comfort.
So, so Jenny, it's, I mean Ella, I'm sorry, Ella, so we have not really engaged Mr. Wu yet to do a study. He's just available for questions today. Is that, am I correct Ella?
Yeah, that's correct. Based on the analysis that staff did and then the conversations that we've had, it's just not very clear that the city of Fort Lauderdale has specific issues. If there was an analysis, I think we would suggest that the analysis maybe focus on, you know, the area and the character and kind of determine like Mr. Wu suggested. For example, what are some of the criteria that would trigger a potential impact? Such as you have to be of a certain height, or you have to be within a certain proximity to a body of water, or perhaps on certain streets that are heavy pedestrian, that we, you know, believe that that's, that that's something that should be considered. In other words, not necessarily specific wind analysis of individual buildings, but, but looking at the, the criteria that we currently have in the code and what would trigger a potential analysis, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it makes sense. Does anyone have any comments on this? Do we want to move forward with an analysis? Or according to Ella, we already have sufficient building codes in place that anticipate the impact of wind and, and they already do mitigate it. What, what are your thoughts? You have any thoughts?
Yeah, Mayor, I got a couple.
Sure.
Questions. Thanks, Mr. Wu. What, I guess, my first question is, could we do like a citywide? Could you do an evaluation of kind of citywide of where are the areas that might be most impacted? And then make recommendations if there are some to be made based on those areas that are, could be most impacted by the wind?
Yes, yes, we, there are at least there are two approaches we can do this. One is based on the past experience. As I said, we have done many project in the city. So we, very likely, we can figure out the word, it will be the windy place and then what caused the problem. And then there's another approach is we can put the entire city into a computer program, so we can model the wind flow around the entire city. And then we can identify where's the problem and then how to fix it. And we can do it in the wind tunnel too, because those are very similar tools. But the wind tunnel is more traditional, it's physical modeling and then computer, computer simulation looks more interesting. And then, yeah, you, you can visualize the wind flow between the buildings and then that is very useful too, too. So we do both.
Okay. What's the, do you have any sense of just ballpark number, how much this would cost, either one of those?
Yeah, based on our experience with other cities, if we don't go to the detail modeling like a computer or wind tunnel, and you just need some guide, guidelines, and then we identify problem and then tell you what will be the minimum height you have to do wind study and how to do it, and then write a document and then maybe provide some trainings to, to the planners, how to use this. Typically, we're charged somewhere between twenty or thirty thousand dollars. And then if you have to, you want to do a computer simulation for the entire city. And that, that was, I would have to say, depends on how good is your city model. Because we are going to put that digital model into the computer to do the simulation. If we have to spend a lot of time to fix the model, then that would be expensive. But if the model is reasonable, I would say it depends on how many configurations you want to do. Like you want to do what's existing in the city and you want to do what's going to happen in the future, say ten years or twenty years. What's a master plan? If we do like a two configurations and for a city like this size, I would say we need maybe another twenty or thirty thousand dollars. That, that's kind of ballpark, but don't quote me on it. And then if we are going to do this and I'm going to get a project manager or someone to talk to Ella, we can finalize the details.
Okay, great. And last question is, I get, so you've, it sounds like you've represented or helped with some projects in Fort Lauderdale in the past. Are you currently representing any projects or working with projects in Fort Lauderdale?
Could be, but I'm, I'm not hundred percent sure. I, I do have a list and then, like I have a, some very, not, I have a few project numbers, very, very recent, like River Lofts. So, but I don't know, is it this year or is it we are, we are done with the project? I, I'm not hundred percent sure, but we do, we do have a few project in the last one or two years, for sure.
Okay, great. And Ella, I don't know how that works with procurement, but just conflicting out and so forth if someone's.
Um, I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure if I, if I can speak to that. I know. Yeah, thank you. There are some limitations.
Chris question. So, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wu. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great, thank you. We had one person who signed up to speak, Gary Grayson. Is Gary on the line?
Mayor, I did have some questions. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I thought I had asked you before. Okay.
No, thank you.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Wu?
Yes.
You do? Okay, why don't you go ahead and ask?
Thank you, Mr. Wu. Thanks for being here with us today. I appreciate it. I have a feeling that I do know where it's windy in Fort Lauderdale, so I, I'm more concerned with, if you've had a chance to look at our building codes and if you've looked at how we go about approving projects just in the past, I have heard folks, you know, testify to what's called the Venturi effect and, you know, other issues that deal with wind. But I would be more interested in knowing what it is that we're doing or not doing to address problems that we might have with wind with regards to how we approve structures and where exactly they're located in relationship to neighboring structures. So when you do studies, do you get into that kind of detail as well?
Oh, yes. Yes, that, that could be a part of the terms of reference we are going to set up for the city. Say, if the building is ten feet tall and we know it's not going to cause any problem. And if it's more than, say, a hundred feet, let's give a number there, and then we know potentially this could be problematic. And then at the early design stage, we can study it using wind tunnel or using computer. And then we can predict the wind condition, the future wind condition at a certain place will be comfortable for certain activities. And if we find that the wind speed is too high, higher than certain levels, then we'll provide mitigation measures like starting from change building mass and increase the distance and have a podium to have canopies and then adding landscaping or other measures. So that's, that's, that's in the process for wind study from the beginning of the planning stage until construction and the finish the project and then, yeah. Even for existing problems, if you identify the issues there, we can look at it and then say, this is a cost of wind coming from southeast around the river, and then this is how you can improve the condition.
Good. Now, that's good to know, especially those kinds of mitigation proposals. Are you aware of cities that actually within their code have wind as part of an approval process? In other words, where a developer would have to present certain information that addresses wind before a project is actually approved or not? Do cities have that in their code?
Yeah, there are many, many cities in the world. And then the biggest one in US would be Boston and then San Francisco, Oakland, Chicago, New York. They, they all have a requirement for wind study. Like in Boston and San Francisco, you had to do wind study first before you do anything else, because those two places are windy.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here with us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, just a question. Don't, don't we also require a wind study? Anthony?
So it's not a wind study for the development approval. As part of the Florida Building Code, they have to show wind loads on the structure itself so that we have something that verifies that the cladding won't come off during a high velocity wind event. We, I, just to reiterate, and I think we've said this before in other presentations, this part of not just the country, but of the world, has some of the strictest high velocity wind requirements on the planet.
For hurricane reasons.
For hurricane. And Broward County and Dade County have their own versions of those, of those ordinances. So we, we go through and we look for the materials that are provided by the engineers and the architects to show that those loads are, are being met and the structure will withstand the pressures.
Right, but I don't think we're talking about the same thing. I mean, the buildings themselves can withstand the wind, but the question here is the pedestrian experience. Whether or not they're going to be blown over by a gust of wind coming off of a forty story building.
That's correct. So there, there are definitely two.
Building could stay intact.
Right. There are two issues that have been addressed.
Slot, but, but the people are being blown away. That's what we're talking about.
That's correct, Mayor. You're absolutely right. So.
I guess, can Mr. Wu confirm that then, that the cities who have the wind studies are this, wind studies on the ground for the people walking and they're, we're not talking about building wind load?
Yes, the mayor is correct. Like the requirement for wind loads on the building, that, that's because of hurricane in, in your area. But the many cities has a requirement for people's comfort. We call the pedestrian comfort study. That's required in, at least in city of San Francisco, Boston, and New York, city of London, Hong Kong, Toronto, many, many cities. They require this kind of study.
Thank you for clarifying that difference. How many complaints do we get on a regular basis, I guess, about people being adversely impacted by it being too windy on the ground?
I honestly, I've been with the city for almost sixteen years. I don't really hear that many complaints about wind on the ground. We've had, we've had various comments and concerns regarding the Venturi effect that Vice Mayor had brought up a little bit ago. But as far as complaints on the ground, at least my department hasn't been receiving a lot of them.
Well, what could you do anyway?
Well, and, and that's, I think, what Mr. Wu was alluding to. So if you look at the city of Toronto and if you, if you go back to when there was some members of the community that did a presentation to a city commission conference, I think they brought up Vancouver. So if I'm remembering correctly, what Vancouver did was they required almost a shade structure to project off the face of the building because the downwash from the building was causing some uncomfortable areas to occur, depending on the size of the building. Like Mr. Wu said, the height has a lot to do with it.
So that would deflect the downdraft.
That deflects the downdraft. So what Ella was bringing up when she was talking about it a little bit ago, our code requires in most of the city that you have a podium with a step back. So that effectively works as a block for the downdraft in a lot of areas. So, and plus the height of the building has to be taken into consideration. There are a couple of moving parts that, you know, staff doesn't have all the expertise necessary to really provide detailed feedback on. But from what we can tell from our research, there are some aspects of what our current adopted downtown master plan has that would address these. Now, determining whether there's locations in the city that are more prevalent than others in terms of pedestrian comfort, you know, that hasn't been done. And like I said, we, we haven't received many comments about it.
So, so Mr. Wu, do you also throughout your studies agree that what we are doing currently in the city of Fort Lauderdale with our podiums and that type of, type of design work that we have? Do you think that does mitigate some of the discomfort that a pedestrian would feel on the ground?
Yeah, the podium is a very important elements in the building design to reduce the wind. And then, yeah, the number one reason for high wind speed at the ground level is because of downwash. The higher wind speed at the higher elevation, downwash of the building facade and get on the ground level. So if you have a large podium, and then the wind will hit the podium first before it get to on the ground level. And podium is always good for, for the ground level, but if people are using the podium for swimming pool, for amenity, then that, that's a bad news for, for those people on the podium. So you have to look at it and also you have to decide which side the podium should be on to be more effective. Because in, in your area, most of winds are coming from the east. So you have to look at the orientation and you have to look at the size of the podium. And then also how tall is the podium? Like sometimes I saw people have a podium, like in New York, have podium like a twenty story. So the podium itself becomes a building. That can create a problem too.
Well, the podium, the podium only comes, it only deflects the wind on a downdraft. And that's only if it's a wedding cake design. A lot of our podiums now, especially on the face of the street, have, are in the same plane as the upper floors of the, of the building. So that really isn't helpful under, under current design, under current designs of buildings. As I walk down some of our streets, it's not a wedding cake design. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a flat surface in the same plane. Yes, you're correct. Those who are, who may be on the amenities deck on the sixth floor, sitting on top of the, on the podium, definitely get a breeze. And, but that, that just talks about the downdraft. It doesn't talk about the lateral draft that might come up the river that goes right through the middle of our city. And as far as the beach buildings are concerned, I mean, it's always windy there. So, but anyway, so I think this discussion needs to conclude that we do have a situation where we should, we could consider engaging, you know, a consultant to determine whether or not we should add to our building codes to help mitigate, help mitigate the effects of wind. I don't know, is there, is there an interest on this commission to do that?
Yeah, Mayor, I think it's worthwhile to do a, you know, a citywide analysis and identify where the troubled areas are and what should be done and so forth.
How much is it?
How much is it? Why don't you come, why don't we ask, why don't we ask staff to come back with a proposal and see whether or not?
He said, he said around twenty to thirty thousand for a baseline, Commissioner Moreres.
Is that correct, Anthony?
Yes.
Mr. Wu saying, yes, that is about what he.
I mean, I think it's, it's moving forward. I think that, you know, trying to maintain a pedestrian experience that's enjoyable. We've all been to big cities and we all know that, you know, wind is an important factor. We don't have freezing cold breezes like we do in Chicago or Manhattan. But, you know, it can still be unpleasant to be able to, you know, to have to deal with wind. So for thirty thousand dollars or whatever the, whatever the budget would be, I think that's affordable. What is the rest of the commission think?
Well, I just have a question. I have a question for Anthony or Ella. Let's say we want to change or alter the building codes. Do we have the authority to, to change the Florida building codes or?
I think there's a, probably just some, some terminology that's being used colloquially in this matter. What I think the mayor is referring to is our ULDR requirements, because our master plan really guides the design of the buildings.
Right.
So no, we don't have direct authority to change the Florida building codes. We can advocate for certain changes, but we could amend our ULDRs to require certain elements on the structures to mitigate wind.
Okay, that's, that was my question. We were talking about changing the, the code, so that's why I was, I want to clarify that. So that we can just concentrate on the master plan and not, I don't think we can, we can directly impact or change the code. But we can offer the master plan and design and what we sit down and talk with the developers, like staff is doing now. like staff is doing now. I mean, you guys pretty much do these wind studies and, or have them do them prior to a development coming before the city.
How about we don't call it wind study, we just call it pedestrian comfort study. So there won't be any confusion.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to make sure that, I was just clarifying the building code impact. That's all. Everything else is fine. If you want to do it, we do it.
Someone in their car? I think, I think there's sufficient consensus here to maybe go forward with that. All right, very good. I understand that Mr. Grayson, is he still on the line? Gary Grayson?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Hi, Gary, how are you?
Good. I had no idea I was going to come up, this was going to come up again so soon. Dr. Wu, one of your company's wind studies was featured two weeks ago. I never mentioned your company's name, but hey, since you're here, let's talk about it. Your name isn't on the study, so when I say you, I mean you as a company representative. The entire reason we're here talking about this today is because RWDI produced a wind study of a local building, Riverwalk Residences. It was three parts and 99 pages of saying there's no problem with the new huge Venturi. Conspicuously absent from your study was the actual velocity and pressure increases the new building would cause. 99 pages of everything, except the two pieces of information we were interested in. You have a building full of PhD engineers that couldn't see what every kid in this country knows, and that's what happens when you hold your thumb over the end of a garden hose. In this case, you missed a high velocity hurricane code failure and possible ASE building code failure. So just when does one plus one not equal two anymore? Is it when a dollar sign gets inserted into the equation? So, did city staff ask you what our tower spacing should be in a hurricane-prone Fort Lauderdale? Or we have 30-foot tower spacing and we need you to say that, that's good, like you have before? Two weeks ago, we talked, saw two different traffic engineers say the exact opposite thing because of this developer's indecisiveness. Why is everything associated with this project tainted? Based on your company's unwillingness or inability to point out code failures, can you give us any reason why we should hire you today? A couple of years ago, the city commission agreed to study this issue with various experts in the field and said the city hired the one company that failed us before. Why does it look like city staff is yet again bending over backwards for local developers? Look, we all have to decide what our integrity is worth sometime in our lives. Another expert in building fluid dynamics told me, unfortunately, engineering results for sale. Sadly, you and others have proved this point.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. Any other callers with regard to this item of business one? Okay, thank you so much, Anthony. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you, Mr. Wu, for being part of this meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to business two. Transfer of development rights. Mr. Verhado.
Hello again, Anthony Verhado, Sustainable Development. So this presentation is tied to OFR1 later on this evening's agenda for first reading for transfer development rights. Tricia Logan is going to do the presentation. She'll be explaining what some of our incentives are up to this point and how the transfer development rights program would work. So if we can get Tricia on with the moderator, that.
Is Trish Logan on?
Yes, I'm here. Sorry, had some trouble with the mute button. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Tricia Logan, the Historic Preservation Planner in the Department of Sustainable Development. I'll be giving a presentation on the proposed TDR ordinance. Like Anthony mentioned, it's on tonight's commission agenda for consideration. Can you see my screen okay?
Yes, you can.
Okay. So in a nutshell, a TDR program acts as an additional incentive for historic preservation, which assists historic property owners by allowing them to sell their excess development rights to new developments in areas of the city that are targeted for growth. My presentation today will provide an overview of the TDR process and provide examples of different calculations. So to start, I'll give you an overview of the research process in preparing the proposed ordinance, as well as the prior reviews that we've had. Staff began researching this as a possibility of establishing a TDR program in 2018. And the research primarily consisted of reviewing materials that were provided by the American Planning Association, publications that were written by TDR experts, and review of other TDR ordinances. We also used the Broward County Land Use Plan as a guiding document. And in gathering information for this, we also spoke to other cities. One of those was the city of West Palm Beach, and they indicated that their program is an effective program and has motivated several properties that are within their downtown master plan area to designate properties. And they said that they have an average of three transfers per year. Staff has presented the TDR program to the Historic Preservation Board. We presented to them last August. And in general, they were supportive of the ordinance, but did have questions related to the process, which is something that will work out as we move forward, but isn't necessarily part of this written policy. And then following the Historic Preservation Board, we did present to the Planning and Zoning Board on three separate occasions. And we did address a lot of their concerns during those meetings. One of their points of feedback was to provide some, some ability for properties that are not yet designated to participate in the program. So I'll cover that a little bit more as we move forward through the presentation. And staff did outreach with the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, as well as the Sailboat Bend Civic Association, offering to do presentations, but we, the offers to do those were declined. And then in advance of tonight's meeting, we did send letters out to the chief elected officials, city managers, and directors of planning offices of the surrounding communities to notify this, them of this item. So just to give you an overview, as mentioned previously, the proposed TDR program would act as an additional incentive option. So this is kind of just a snapshot of the available incentives that we have for historic properties. And some of them were actually approved within the past year. So this would be just an additional item that people could take advantage of. And we do try to educate people when they contact us about potentially designating their properties or properties that are already designated historically, and the existing property owners on what kind of incentives we do have to offer. So we do have a handout that describes them, that's posted on our website. And we also have a YouTube video that's available on the History Fort Lauderdale YouTube channel. If the TDR program is adopted, we would develop further information like this so that we could inform and educate property owners that are interested in participating in the program. So now I'm going to review the applications that are needed for the TDR process. This includes two primary steps. The first is a certificate of eligibility, which is a calculation of available rights that include all available floor area and density. And this would be issued to the historic property owner. The second application type is a certificate of transfer. And this is the actual real estate transaction, which would be selling unused rights to a new development in a receiving area. Each of the receiving areas that are outlined, which I'll get to later on in the presentation, allow for development rights to be incorporated either through floor area, which would be translated into additional height for a new development, and then maximums of density that could be transferred as well. If this program is adopted, we will also be proposing fees for each application type to recoup the costs associated with staff time needed to process each of the applications. For a certificate of eligibility, we would be looking at $125 for that application. And for the certificate of transfer, we would be looking at a $500 application fee. So getting a little bit deeper into the certificate of eligibility, this is the first step of the TDR program. And this is just to verify that the property is located in a designated sending area, meaning that it is locally designated as a historic resource or a historic property, as an individual landmark or within a historic district, and verify the calculations that are provided for either density or floor area for that property owner. And they can use that certificate of eligibility to market their available rights to transfer. So this is just a map that kind of gives a screenshot of what properties within the city do qualify as a sending area. So in the blue, you can see the historic districts, and then the green shows the designated historic landmarks. We do have an interactive map on the Historic Preservation website that shows all of the designated properties. And there's also a layer on the city's GIS property reporter map. So anyone can go and look and see which properties are designated within the city. Staff has also prepared a proposal specifically for the Sailboat Bend Historic District to identify properties that are contributing and non-contributing within that district, because this program would actually allow for any contributing property to take advantage of the TDR program. So as I mentioned earlier, something that the Planning and Zoning Board did bring up was to allow properties that are not yet designated to participate in this program, but properties that could be designated in the future. So we've proposed something for the Planning and Zoning Board to consider, which they did accept, to allow for these property owners to qualify under one of the criteria that's listed on the right-hand side of the screen, to participate. But it does come with the fact that when it comes to the certificate of transfer, they do have to be designated. So prior to actually pursuing the certificate of transfer, they would need to go through that designation process.
Tricia?
Yes.
Go back, please.
Yes.
Where is La Queen Contana Manor?
Oh, it's off of Davie Road. So, yes, on the left-hand side.
Davie Boulevard.
Davie Boulevard. Davie Boulevard.
On which side of 95?
It's on the west side of 95.
Okay.
It's off of Riverland Road.
It's off of, and that's a historic area?
So this is, I'm talking about areas that have been surveyed, surveyed as part of an architectural resource survey effort. And we're going through the city systematically to locate areas that have concentrations and densities of properties that are over 50 years old, to identify potential historic districts or potential historic landmarks. And so we did receive a grant last year to pursue a large amount of areas that, that we were able to survey. And so as part of this ordinance, we are proposing that you can use these surveys as a basis for determining if a property would be eligible for designation.
So 50 years is still the benchmark?
It's still the benchmark. If a property is less than 50 years old, it does have to be determined to be exceptional. So it's possible for a property to be designated that's less than 50 years old. But in conducting these surveys, we're primarily looking at properties that are 50 years and older. But obviously, if we come across one that sticks out architecturally and is exemplary, then that could be considered.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
No, it's fine. So I'll move on to the second half of the application process, which is the certificate of transfer. And this is the application that is between the sending site and the receiving site to officially transfer the unused floor area or density from the historic resource to the new development. As part of the application process, there are a number of items that are required to be submitted from each property owner. And for the historic resource, that does include a restrictive covenant, an existing conditions report, and a maintenance plan that are all required to be ultimately recorded with the Broward County Records Office within 30 days following that approval. And then, just to give an overview of where things can be transferred to, we do have designated receiving areas outlined within the ordinance. Within, for transferring density, there are two primary areas that act as receiving areas. This includes specific zoning districts within the Uptown Urban Village and any lot of land that is within the Unified Flet Zone. Even though any lot of land is eligible within the Unified Flet Zone, a receiving area may not be located on the Barrier Island or within an adopted adaptation action area. And all receiving areas must comply with any applicable height requirements of the FAA. So on this first slide, you can see the northern end of the city for the Unified Flet Zone, and then the southern area of the Unified Flet Zone. And then this also shows the, the areas that are in the Uptown Urban Village that would be specifically identified to act as receiving areas for density. And then on the other side of the program, we also allow for the transfer of floor area. So within this map, you can see, there are 13 different zoning districts that act as receiving areas. Each allows for the use of floor area to be incorporated into the new development as additional height. And in the regional activity-centered zoning districts, the allowance for additional height corresponds to a smaller percentage of the additional height that is permissible through an application for a conditional use permit or specific performance standards. Incorporation of the development height, development rates, either density or floor area into a receiving site is still subject to review of the Development Review Committee process. So they still have to go through an application process for the new development. So this kind of gives you a little bit more on the northern end of the city, because it just doesn't all fit on one map. And then, again, it's eligible for the Uptown Urban Village. So just to outline some of the maximums that are allowed through this program, the chart on the top of the screen shows the maximum height that's allowed through the transfer. So each zoning district has a different allowable height by right. They have an allowable height using the conditional use process. And then somewhere in the middle is where the TDR maximum height would fall. And then for zoning districts to allow for density being transferred, there's different allowabilities within the racks to allow up to 50 units per acre. And then with the TDR program, you can transfer up to 10 units additional per acre. So depending on where the actual property is located within the city and within the rack. Within the receiving areas, there are several criteria that are outlined within the proposed TDR ordinance. This includes compliance with applicable zoning district requirements, again, not being located on the Barrier Island or within the adaptation action area, and also comply with the FAA requirements. And then for specifically to receiving sites, there's also additional criteria that properties cannot have any loans or code violations, not negatively impact environmental and historic resources, be compatible with adjacent planned land uses, and have adequate public facilities. And then again, just kind of a snapshot of the fact that any of these properties that are receiving TDRs do have to go through the Development Review Committee process. Certain developments that obtain TDRs may not have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board, but some will, and some may also have to come to the city commission, just depending on what level of request that they're proposing. And just to give you a little bit of a snapshot of kind of how the calculations are done, this is a snapshot of the, a sample calculation for density. So in this scenario, I'm using the, the fire station, which is in Sailboat Bend. It actually doesn't have any units on the site, so we don't really have to subtract any from the calculation. But you take the existing acreage and you multiply that by the permitted density in the area. You round down your result, and then you subtract that by the existing number of units. So since it's zero, you end up with 15 units available for transfer for density. And then, just as an example of how it would be transferred over to a new development, say that they would like to transfer 10 units as are sold in perpetuity due to the new development. And they have just one acre, they could fit 35 units in that eight, um, one acre today, but they've purchased the 10 units from the fire station. And so then they could end up with 45 units total.
So Tricia, what value is attached to that, to that?
The units, the unit.
Those units, yeah, it's just whatever the market will bear?
Yes, it's market rate.
Okay.
So the market would determine what that value is. And the city would not necessarily control that private transaction.
Okay.
Okay. And then, um, just lastly, just another quick example of transferring the floor area and the calculation of that. So you would, um, you would take into account the approximate developable area and then multiply that by the the permitted height or permitted area and then subtract that by the existing building square footage. And that's how much square footage you would have to transfer. So in this case, you would have approximately 45,000 square feet to transfer. And then, just as a, as an example of how that transfer would actually work, you would have the sending site with that 45,000 square feet. You have the new development that can develop up to six stories by right, but they purchased the TDRs and the floor area and they can incorporate that into up to an additional three stories on their development site. So that is, that concludes my presentation and I'll go ahead and stop sharing.
Great, thank you so much. This is really, really great. Does anyone have any questions of Tricia?
I do, Mayor, thank you.
Marais, do you have any?
That's okay, I'll go next, go ahead.
All right, Mayor, go ahead.
No, I, Commissioner Marais, that's okay.
No, it's, yeah, no, I maybe because I'm just getting closer, sorry, maybe he heard me.
No, that's okay. I I know that you're very encouraged now to designate a lot of properties so Uptown can get a lot more buildings going on, right?
Yes, I did notice I don't have any historic places in. Oh, yeah, my house probably 60, but actually, I I did, I do come from the Riverland area. Commissioner McKenzie and I, our families are from the same area. Commissioner McKenzie, are we in that historic area over west in in Riverland that Tricia's talking about?
Like Quintana?
Maybe we're, yeah, no, we're not in that area. Okay, because I know our houses are older.
You were born in a Quonset home, I don't think.
Yes, yes, so our families come from the same area. My grandparents lived over in Riverland.
I was born in a log cabin, but that's.
Honest day, okay, but no, seriously, let's go back to this. So I noticed, Tricia, you did say Uptown, so I was gonna ask about that. So we have some incentives, we can go up to 100 acre, 100 units per acre if it's affordable. So how does, what trumps what in terms of what I want to do affordable or maybe I don't? Could I do affordable plus some or is is there a cap? Like, how does that work?
So you couldn't exceed, you couldn't really combine the programs. So it's, uh, you can't get, if you can get 100 units per acre with the Affordable Housing Program, you can't get an additional 10 units per acre using TDRs.
Okay, so one or the other. Choose one or the other. Okay, so that's interesting.
And it's a different process, so.
So one or the other. It looked like when you were showing the map, it looked like the Galt area, the shops may have been included in a receiving property, but you did say nothing on the barrier island. It it was, am I accurate that the Galt shops may be included? Because they are pretty low and I have had conversations with the property owners over there about getting additional heights. So that would be interesting if they could receive additional height.
They would not be able to receive the additional height because they are on the barrier island.
That map looked kind of confusing. It looked like it went. On that, my.
Yeah, yeah, it cannot go there. We have a, with the Broward County Land Use Plan, we do have restrictions on being able to have the TDRs being transferred to the barrier island. And we have a definition within the proposed ordinance of what the barrier island is.
All right, like I said, maybe I just misinterpreted the map, the colors I was looking at.
Yeah, we can definitely send, send you the map.
Yeah, no, that's good. And a question that was brought up at my district one last night was, would co-ops be able to participate in this process? Into, yes?
If they are to actually act as a sending, sending area or sending site.
Sending.
Yeah, if they're designated as a historic property, then they would be able to to participate.
Okay, or want to become designated if they call. Okay, good, so. And then the last question for my district meeting was, I know there's no dollar amount associated, but do we collect and pool the money or is it just a fee between two property, private property people?
Between the two.
Between two, so we don't collect.
It's a private transaction. We aren't acting as a as a bank.
All right, thank you, all done.
We can't skim something off the top? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Trish, first of all, thank you so much for all this work. I I can't even remember how many years some of us have been talking about we have transferred development rights. So to see this actually happen now with all of this.
Eight, for me, 18.
Well, there you go. And yes, and I I think I remember every single one of them. So this is, it's really great that we're at this moment. And I followed every step of the way with the planning and zoning. Thank you so much for working with planning and zoning. I think what it took, three meetings until the final approval. There were so many questions and good questions and good input. So thank you to you and to the Historic Preservation Board and Planning and Zoning for getting this to us at this time. I I think it's a, I think it's a great program to add to our toolbox. Let me ask you, though, because I I am concerned about the education component of this. If this is something that the commission decides is good, what is actually the plan to educate folks about this and even future incentives coming forward? And I don't mean necessarily just on the website, but are we going to be aggressive to let folks know of this type of program?
We haven't discussed specifics, but we're certainly open to what that actually looks like. You know, obviously, we will put information on the website. We can make videos and we can talk about what it looks like to do for their outreach.
You'll notice that the that the city staff reached out to the council civic associations as well as to Sailboat Bend Civic Association and presentations were declined.
I know, I'm a little concerned about that, so hopefully we can turn that around for sure. Because I I don't know why that would be declined, but obviously, it's it's important. Trish, I have a question. What about this phase that we're in now with the incentives? Can you share with us future incentives you're thinking about? And particularly, is there more that we can do in terms of tax abatements for residential properties? I know that we seem to have a lot more for commercial properties. Is that something that's even within our control?
So that's not within our control, anything as far as the tax incentives. We do have the tax abatement program, which is for improvements to historic properties. And any property can take advantage of that. It's just going through the process to apply. And then with some of the tax incentives, like we have a 50% reduction in taxes for commercial properties that are historically designated. And that's something that is allowed by the state of Florida. It does not allow for residential properties to participate with that. I think the rationale is the fact that residential properties are eligible for other tax incentives, like the homestead, homestead exemption.
Right, okay, thank you. I just wanted to check on that because I'm I'm happy to see us still working on incentives. I think in the last three years, what's come to this commission has been excellent in terms of really trying to assist the owners of historic properties. And I think the improvements have been really excellent. And I just wanted you to know that I really, really appreciate the work because I think making it less what some people would consider to be an onerous process has definitely, you know, proven itself in the last three years in terms of what we've been doing. Everything from fees to just administrative review instead of having to go to the Historic Preservation Board. Even your recent work with getting the property appraiser, the county property appraiser to make note if a property is designated historic. So people are quote, you know, not so surprised to find out, oh, my gosh, I purchased a historic property or I purchased something in a historic district. So those are all so helpful. And I I look forward to the, you know, the continued work, but I just wanted to say thank you. I think this is a a great program. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Commissioner McKenzie, Commissioner Sorensen, any thoughts?
Oh, thank you, Tricia. Good work.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Trish, and I guess we'll see you tonight.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, on to business three, Las Oles Marina update. Who will be giving that? Ben? The other Ben. Hello, Mr. Rogers.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commission. Ben Rogers, Transportation Mobility. Here to give you a quick update on the Las Oles Marina. At our last meeting, we talked about some timelines and some billables that we needed to accomplish. And at that time, you also asked for a financial review and assessment. So today, on the line with me, there's representatives from SunTex that are available to make comment. And then my colleague Laura Reese will provide a financial overview. Do we have the presentation up?
I guess the question is, when do we get started?
It's a great question.
Let's cut to the chase.
Yes, so, next slide. So Mayor, there's, uh, this is a very complex, as we talked about last time, a lot of agreements that overlap and intertwine with each other. We're working with SunTex, with City Attorney's Office, with the state of Florida right now and trying to get everything that's remaining taken care of. And so, as you can see on this slide, there's eight total agreements that we're working on. Four of them, I feel like, were substantially complete and and almost there. The other ones, we're still negotiating business terms. And so, for for example, the pump station, city staff has reviewed it. We've had a lot of concerns. We've had it in our our court for the last couple of weeks. I met with our attorneys today and feel that we'll be getting a a version back to SunTex probably by end of bit, end of day today or tomorrow. The turn lane agreement, we've been going back and forth on. There's really just a couple of minor things that I think we have ironed out. I received a version today from SunTex. I have not had time to review it, but I did receive it earlier this morning. The ground lease is probably the most complex one. That's the one that is taking all the considerations for the next 50 years and intertwining different conditions and terms into it. I'd have to defer to the city attorney on where we stand on that, but I know it's it's moving forward. And there are daily and weekly calls with SunTex and their legal team. And then the upland deed reverter, that is between the state and the city, SunTex. And I know there was a call this morning between the city attorney's office, SunTex, and the state to try to put that one to rest.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot still in your office, Alan. What what what's going on there?
The, most of it, as as Mr. Rogers indicated, deals with the ground lease, the Fourth Amendment. Obviously, we had a call as recently as today with the state to make sure we're all on board. There's a few issues with the ground lease. Again, I don't think they're deal killers, but there are things that we do need to iron out. There's some issue as to exactly how to represent the demise premises in the ground lease. You know, I think SunTex wants sort of a diagram and a picture. We we want sort of a meets and bounds. There's an area south of the bridge that they want included in there. But that's a business decision as to whether we're going to include that in the demise premises. I believe staff's and Mr. Rogers's preferences that it not be included in there. There's some parking mitigation issues with some wayfinding signage that we're going back and forth on. They are asking for some offset, rental offset rights with a variety of improvements, including to the parking garage and other issues with the turning lane and the pump station that any sort of default on the city or failure to perform would result in rent abatement. So we're dealing with staff on that because I don't think that's the preferential way to go. Again, we're dealing with a submerged land lease that doesn't come into effect until this Fourth Amendment actually goes into place. So there's some issues there as well. They want some, currently, the way we had presented it was if there was a default by SunTex of the submerged land lease, that that would result in a default as well as the master lease. They want the ability to cure and be able to sue the state and hold any sort of default in abeyance for that period of time, including through repellent rights. So that's something else that we're talking about in negotiating.
These are all very substantive items.
Well, they are, but I.
Part of the original deal.
Well, because a lot of things changed when the state came in and put some conditions on the submerged land lease. It's no longer ours. It's going to be SunTex's. And there's issues there, but you're correct, those are issues that were not originally contemplated with with, again, we, there's a lot of components to this deal that were not the original, the parking, the turning lane, the pump state, there's a lot of variety of things, plus the conditions that have been put on the state. So it has morphed into a little bit more than what it originally was.
Honestly, I mean, this has been going around for, I don't know how many years. And my feeling is that these ancillary issues should be dealt with after we've already begun the dredging and the installation of the of the marina. I don't think that these items should hold it up. And if they are, then we're never going to get anywhere. I mean, this was approved how many years ago? It was when I was a commissioner, four years ago. We're still, nothing's happening. And and I don't know about the rest of the commission, but this is getting very frustrating. You know, we're never going to see this as an expanded marina if we keep going like this. It seems like every time we turn around, there's another, uh, another issue that keeps popping up that is expected to come from the city, another concession. And, you know, I I mean, it's very, very frustrating. I think this community has seen a lot of foot dragging here. And and a burden is being placed on your department that I don't think was intended. So does anyone else on the commission have any thoughts on this?
Well, Mayor, I I do. Actually, this this current site plan and and all of these other issues, such as the turn lane that I fought for and the pump station that I fought for, this did not happen four years ago. This happened, I mean, how long ago was it been? A year and a half ago?
Yeah, it was July of 2020.
Okay, so it hasn't, it hasn't been four years. And I think sometimes, and and we did change a lot and we also added a building. And, you know, a lot of this also, you have to understand, the cabinet was supposed to do a lot of things in terms of approval in Tallahassee. The cabinet did not meet for how many months, Ben? Like six, seven, eight months during COVID?
Yeah, I'd have to defer to.
So I I I wouldn't be such a Debbie Downer mayor. I think that there've been a lot of extenuating circumstances, but I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I think everybody is 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 trying to address, you know, all of the changes that we've made and then the conditions that the state has imposed upon us. But Chris and Ben, tell me, um, I think, what do you think? Because I've been following this very closely. I ask all these questions, Mayor. Trust me, almost every other day of the development team and city staff and in neighborhood meetings, et cetera, et cetera. And what do you think? Sometime in April or May, are we going to put a shovel in the ground? What do you guys think?
I was told.
Well, I I can't speak about shovels on the ground, but I can say that we're not, I think we're close, we're closer than we've ever been. I think Mr. Rogers can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the last iteration of the fourth, the back and forth was even today, I believe. So we're actively working on it daily. So I don't, I don't think we're far. It's just some of these have some business decisions to be made. And there's obviously some things we want in there to protect the city going forward because once we do get into this Fourth Amendment and move forward, there's not going to be really an ability to come back and insert those protections, so.
Right, and I I think also, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, or Chris or Ben, but if you looked at the expansion that we've been able to accomplish, especially with moving the riparian line with Portofino condo next door, we're going to be getting a lot larger vessels in there and the dollar amounts in terms of revenues to the city will increase substantially. Am I, am I okay on that? Am I wrong? Am I good?
That's, that's the plan. We'll see how that translates, but that, yeah, that is the plan. And and on that Portofino side of it, I think from a conceptual standpoint, I think we're we're there with regards to some of the credits.
I think we, I think we just have to hang in there a little bit. I think we're really close. Mayor, we waited 18 years for transfer development rights. We can wait another month or two for the SunTex Marina to begin at the Las Oles.
Well, that's what we were told last year. So, and it seems like just another obstacle is thrown in the way to try to. to try to, you know, eke out another concession from the city. Look, I think that these issues can be resolved as we go forward. Why we have to wait to start the dredging process, the only thing I think we have to wait on is what's going on with the state, but everything else can move forward. And it's just disappointing that here we are still sitting with no marina expansion like we originally contemplated, no restaurants, no nothing. And we went through all this agony with the neighbors and community to try to agree on something, and, you know, these details are holding us back. And I'm not sure that they're material to not allow the progress of the project to go forward.
Mayor, the dredging cannot start until the state permit is issued. Alan, if you want to correct me, or Ben? And the state cannot issue that permit until the Fourth Amendment is finalized. So, you know, it's a little bit, you know, it's tough, but, you know, I just don't want us to blanketly blame, you know, whoever we want to blame here. I think that everyone is really working hard on this. And I think that we're getting there, but I'm not as negative as you are on this. I'm sorry.
Okay, so Vice Mayor, when do you think this is going to start, then?
Well, it's not up to me. I'm asking Alan, I'm asking Ben, I'm asking Chris. Even if someone's on the line now from the development team, when do you think we'll have this Fourth Amendment done, Alan? When do you think the state will issue the permit for the dredging? And when do you think we'll start?
Yeah, so Vice Mayor, first off, to correct my statement earlier, it was July of 2019 when those turn stations and pump station came into play.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. So 2019, July 2019, is when the pump station and the turn lane, not 2020. To answer your question on timing, I met with multiple attorneys this morning to kind of lay out what's remaining, what's next. And we're shooting for April to bring everything wrapped up. Obviously, that's got to go through-
April of 2021?
Yes, sir. So sometime in the next four to six weeks, that's our goal. Obviously, we ran into some obstacles here and there along the way, but our goal is to have it to you in April.
So Vice Mayor, can I be negative after April of 2021 and wait, hold that back?
Well, it hasn't stopped to before, so I don't see why not. Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate your sympathy.
And so-
My pleasure.
Mayor, the rest of the presentation is focused on the financials, and I'll call Laura Reese up if you're ready for that.
Okay, so the ground lease should be resolved by April of this year.
That's our goal, absolutely.
And that will allow us to proceed with the dredging?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Comments regarding this matter? There being none? I have three people, wait, one person who signed up to speak.
Ron, Mayor, he's, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry, I didn't see-
Is he going to go through the rest of the presentation, or?
Well, he was walking away, so.
Okay.
Laura, were you going to continue with the presentation? Oh, Laura was going to continue with the presentation, so I'm sorry. Laura, please continue.
Okay, thank you. So I was asked to look at the financial impacts to the general fund from this action. So I worked with Jason Riggins, Eric Metz, both of them are from SunTex, and Jonathan Luscombe from Parks and Rec Marina Division, in addition to Ben and his team. And first, what we looked at is the information in our financial system and in our budget to see what our revenues and expenses have been for the past few years. So our current revenues are around $1.4 million per year from fees related to the La Solas Marina. And we're currently spending around $400,000 a year to fund three FTEs, or full-time equivalents, and the operating costs of the marina. So the net to the general fund, the La Solas Marina is netting to the general fund a benefit of around $1 million a year. So that's where we are right now.
So this next slide, which says SunTex projections, 8.70 million, that's going to, the difference is going to SunTex?
Yes, the next slide, please. So then we met with SunTex to understand what the new lease looks like in terms of financials to them and financials to us. And so one of the key differences we identified is that they had a different assumed occupancy rate. Our current experience is that we have a 72% occupancy rate. In their financial models, they're assuming a 78% occupancy rate or an increase of 6%. And for their revenues, we're currently grossing again the 1.45 million. They're assuming that they'll be bringing in $8.7 million in revenue under-
That's with the expanded, that's with the expanded-
Yeah, with the expansion and increased rate schedule. So they're assuming pretty substantially higher rates than what we're currently charging.
And what is our return on this?
Yep, so the next slide, please. So then we sort of plugged that into what the future projections are for our city. And so in the first year, fiscal year '21, we assumed that the transfer would have happened in March, but we know that's not going to happen, but essentially, we assumed six months that we wouldn't receive revenue, and then that all of the expenses would go to the SunTex as well. And so how we understand the agreement is that we would get $500,000 in the years where the marina is shut down and being developed. So we assume that for '21 and '22. So in '21, we've already brought in revenue for the first six months, so we already, we can assume that we'll, you know, keep that revenue, plus the $500,000 in base rent, which is guaranteed to us under the contract. So we'll net, again, around 1.3 million instead of 1.4 million. So in '21, we really wouldn't be impacted. In '22, since they'll be under construction, we assume for the full year, we'll only get that $500,000 in rent instead of the, you know, 1.45 million we used to bring in. So that'll impact our general fund by around $1 million, or, you know, $900,000 to the negative in '22. And then in '23, we assumed a full year of operations. And so the components there are, the revenue goes up to $1 million in guaranteed base rent to the city at that point. And then there's also a provision in the contracts of revenues that aren't guaranteed. So we base these based upon their assumed revenue receipts in their financial models because we really couldn't, you know, determine anything different. So we believe we'll be getting 12% of the slip revenue, which equals around $1 million. 15% of ancillary operations, which is $26,000, and ship store and other revenue to the tune of $280,000. So again, that bottom portion is not guaranteed, and the $1 million is all that's guaranteed to the city. So we'd be bringing in 2.45 or million in '23, which is the first full year of operations. And then the expense would only be the pass-through of, and based on a conversation yesterday, that might not happen, but either way, it nets out to the same outcome, which is, you know, $2.3 million. So we're increasing our revenue by around $1 million a year from what we're currently bringing into the general fund.
Any questions of Laura?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Laura. This is great, and you and I have talked about this, but let's go back, go back to the previous slide, please. Okay, what, and I know Dave's on here, but the, give me the linear square footage comparison between ours and current and projected.
You don't mean square footage, you mean linear footage.
Linear feet, sorry.
Yeah.
So you currently have around $3,000 and change, and we're going up to $7,200, I think, more or less, on linear footage. But linear footage is not necessarily a good barometer because the linear footage, as you probably know better than any of the commissioners, Commissioner Sorensen, is that when you have 100 linear foot boat, you need more square footage, right? Because the beam is much bigger. So we do look typically at sellable square footage, but the amount of acreage or square footage of the composition of the marina is almost tripled.
Yep. Okay, great. Now, let's go, thanks, Dave. Let's go to the next slide, and Laura, tell me, contractually, so we are, the total base rent is $500,000, and what's the contractual language, or Ben, or whoever, that it's limited to $500,000 during what time? When it's under construction, or what?
Yes, Commissioner, it's $500,000 during the build-out years. That's actually one of the terms that we're negotiating right now on the ground lease amendment, is defining that period of time to make sure that both parties understand the consequences of delays and impacts.
Right, so that's, that's an important detail, obviously, Ben, to really nail down because we want to get that up to a million as soon as possible, and, okay, so I'm going to trust it's in good hands with you negotiating that. Okay, next, and who's negotiated the slip revenue as 12%?
That was in the RFP.
Okay, so that's part of what we put out, and the same is true for the operations of '15 and Ship Store 4?
The RFP asked for 12, but we offered 15 in our response. So we went above and beyond the specs of the RFP.
Okay, great. Thank you. So you went to 15 with ancillary operations?
Yes, so there's a little difference between, let's call it upland rent, and a clear definition of something that we're operating because, like, if you're paying rent, that's one item, and then you're acting as a landlord, but if we're operating a business, like, so you're selling sunglasses or suntan lotion or something like that, then it's 4% of the gross number versus 15% of the rent number. It's a much bigger number.
Yep, okay, and does, Dave, where does the, like, restaurants and so forth, where does that fall under? What bucket?
That falls under the 15% of rent bucket for upland rent. It's kind of like, to kind of simplify it for everyone's edification, there's the bucket of the wet leased income from the water, from all the boats. That's a 12 additional. There's the income from the upland rents. So somebody rents an office or a restaurant or a retail space, that's 15%. And then there's the ancillary businesses that we internally run. Like, if we run the ship store, instead of it being set as, okay, I mean, they're probably about the same, but we could say, what is a fair market rent for the building and pay 15% of that, or pay a much bigger number, which is typically more than, you're better off at 4% of the gross revenues from sales of suntan lotion and beer, or whatever else that the ship store would sell.
And the, okay, yeah, that helps. And that, so for ancillary operations, is the, your projected annual revenue for ancillary operations is like $300,000? Is my math right?
I think it's higher than that, but I would have to break out the model, or Riggins, I don't know if he's on, he could give that number, but-
I think that'd be a lot bigger, and I'm just wondering why 15% of that is only $26,000, but my math, or, I don't know, I might be confused.
That might be, that $26,000, that might be just ship store sales. But I'm not sure where's-
Dave, this is Eric Metz. If I could just speak to it real quick, you know, this is showing the revenue to the city, so that is the percentage revenue. That's not the total revenue.
That's a percentage revenue of what? 15% ancillary?
I think on that one, that's roughly $175,000, answer one, if it's 15%. But the real one is the ship store revenue. There's a larger dollar amount there, revenue.
I think these numbers are inverted on this spreadsheet, to be honest. I think the rent is going to be closer to the 2.80, and the ancillary is the 26. But, you know, I'm not-
It seems off to me. I mean, and Dave, I'm guessing that the restaurant is still going to be pulling in more than that, so.
We're not operating the restaurant, we're leasing it. So that is, would show up in the 15% bucket. So there's probably, you know, I'm almost positive that these numbers were either accidentally inverted. But I believe the total number is correct, which I think is the most, you know, significant number to you, which is the 2.45 in 2023, or the 2.543 in 2024.
Okay, yeah, if you can just get us just a little bit more drilled down, what's in what bucket, that'd be great, just so I'm understanding.
Happy to do that.
Cool, and then, great, thanks. And then, and I walked through this too, because I, and Laura helped explain, and Alan helped explain this to me, so this is more just, Mayor, I just wanted, for the, you all maybe already know this, but the deeded to the city pass-through, that's just for the the land lease, the submerged lease, that basically, we pay it, but then SunTex will pay us back. So when you look at operating expense, that's the same number as a TII TF. And the city's projection, and Chris, again, I did, Chris Lagerblatt, I just want to make sure I'm tracking this, city's projection of added operational expenses for this is basically zero. Right, Chris? Am I tracking all that?
Right. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, or Ben, thanks. And let me see here, if I had another question. Oh, and Ben and Chris, I'm feeling fine about the percent breakout, and I know that was in the RFP and so forth, but I just want to make sure we're we're feeling good about the 12, 15. They bumped it up to 15, I guess, for ancillary, which is great, and 4%. Are we still feeling good about the, you know, mutually beneficial deal on this revenue?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the numbers. I mean, the majority of the numbers were associated with the RFP response years ago. The only thing that we're really negotiating now, and maybe the city attorney could correct me if I'm wrong, but the only thing I think we're worried about or or negotiating at this point is the Portofino addition and what kind of rent credit we would provide to SunTex for acquiring that riparian line.
Okay, great. Dave, are you feeling good? Is there anything, what's outstanding in your head?
I mean, I feel great. Just for your own edification, this is the most, this, let's call it, this is the greatest amount of rent as a percent of a marina of any marina in the state of Florida. So the city's deal on this is about as good as it can get relative to other comparable marinas, whether you're looking at PMR or Miami Beach Marina, or a variety of marinas that are owned by cities or other municipalities and leased to third-party operators. This is about as good of a deal. It's certainly the most rent as a percent of gross that we pay in any one of our marinas portfolio-wide. So the city should feel good about that component. I'm feeling great. I think everybody's working diligently. I want to thank the city attorney's office and everybody for doing everything that they can. Unfortunately, to a little elaborate, we are dealing with four different governmental jurisdictions: the Army Corps of Engineers, the state, the county, and the city. And when you have that many different governmental agencies with different competing interests and different county, city, state, and federal attorney's offices, it just takes a little longer than everybody helps, and I apologize for any delays that could have been caused on our end, but I'm telling you that we're spending a lot of money trying to make this happen as quickly as possible.
Great, no, I appreciate it. I think this is awesome. I think we're heading in a very good direction. So, thanks, Dave. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, is Roy Filetra on the line? Troy Filetra? You see Troy? He signed up to speak.
Mayor, may I ask Dave a question while he's here?
Sure.
Thanks. Dave, if you can go back to the original RFP and the projections in terms of revenues for the city, which was obviously a while ago in comparison to where we are today. But on the sheet that Laura showed us, it said SunTex projections, 8.7 million, which was a 500% increase. Can you just tell us what the city was looking to basically see as a revenue from the RFP versus what we are looking at as a revenue at this moment?
Sure, so, I'm not on mute, right? Okay, so, when this, when, at least it was my understanding, and I think Mayor Dean Tantallas will basically be able to confirm this. But the city was basically looking to make sure that they had guaranteed rent- but, um, the city was basically looking to make sure that they had guaranteed rent equivalent to what they currently make today, which was confirmed by staff, which is the $1 million a year, so there was this base rent of a million, and that everything above that would be, you know, accretive to the city in the form of revenue. And when we first bid this, there was a much smaller footprint, there was a spend guarantee of, in the lease of about $20 million. The footprint was much smaller, um, so by expanding the footprint, maximizing the, the uplands to create that sort of marine services building, and the first-class restaurant, we were able to dramatically increase the revenue to the city by about, on the, we probably doubled what, what I would call our percentage rent component from where, where it was before, um, which was, which is all accretive to the city, it might have even, upon thinking about it, tripled that number to get to that two, five, um, two million number, plus, 2,500,000 number, I think we were closer to a 1,005,000 when we first started, and now we're at a 2,500,000, so that percentage rent has grown substantially through the expansion and the maximization and utilization of the uplands in that sort of sliver of land that abuts the marina, uh, next to the garage. I'm not sure I answered your question correctly, but let me know if I'm missing anything.
No, that's good, thanks for the clarification, I appreciate it.
Okay, um, did, did we ever get Troy on the line? Nope. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, great, thank you, thank you, everybody. We appreciate all your contributions to this effort, and let's hopefully we can get this thing moving along. We move on to business four, discussion concerning Harbor Inlet Gate. We have a few people who have signed up to speak, one, Mr. Linder is here in person. Is there a presentation that we want to make here? Who's going to head up this discussion?
Be, um, leading the discussion?
Who's going to?
Actually, Chief Sosa will be assisting us with that discussion.
So the issue here, as everybody knows, is that there is concern about beach access near the Points of America area, um, and the fact that there has been concern over whether or not there are individuals, mostly young people, who have been using that area in ways that have upset local neighbors, and, uh, and there's been some discussion about whether or not to close up the gate to the access to that beach area during certain times in the day or evening, and whether or not that's appropriate considering it's a public access beach. Sir, please introduce yourself, tell us what you have to tell us. Please speak. Please speak into the microphone, they're not very sensitive.
All right, we'll try this again. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioner. My name is Frank Sousa, I'm the interim assistant chief at the police department, I oversee all of our operations. Uh, I'm familiar with this issue, it's been an issue that since the pandemic began, that has come across my desk several times. I can tell you, the, the issue's multifaceted in the approach that we've taken towards it, I've spoken to several residents in different buildings along the area of Points of America. We do have an off-duty police detail that is there, I've spoken to the off-duty coordinator. We've augmented our patrols in that area to address the violations that many of the residents have complained about.
Who's paying for that off-duty police officer?
It, it's a combination of the buildings within the association. I can also tell you that we've augmented our police patrols in response to some of the complaints that we've received from the association. We have not been dispatched to the area for the, some of the violations that we're here to discuss today in terms of drinking, kids partying, sexual activities, we have not personally been dispatched to that area. Our calls for service in that area actually reduced by five in the same comparison from November 19 to February 20, compared to November 20 to February 21. I have spoken to several residents there, uh, the district commander reached out to several of the buildings to try to get a, an agreement between the buildings to enforce towing, because one of the other complaints that they got, I guess there's only five parking spots in that area, and what happens is when these individuals come and visit the beach, they take the five spots and resident spots. From the information that the district commander relayed to me, none of the buildings were willing to enter into a tow agreement, so we just continue monitoring and enforcement, we've worked with, uh, transportation to assist us with parking enforcement, and I'm willing to answer any other questions that maybe need to be answered at this time.
Can you just, uh, stand back for a second, there's some people who have signed up to speak, let me ask them to speak, and then I'll ask the district commissioner to, uh, to, um, to proceed with the discussion. So, uh, we have a few people who've signed up to speak, thank you for your presentation, uh, thank you. Start with Joanne Robinson, followed by Annette Ross, followed by Hi Montero. Is, um, is Joanne on the line?
Hello?
Hi, Joanne.
Hi, Dean, how are you?
Very good, we give you three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. First of all, Mayor Commissioners, we do sympathize with the problems that the residents along the beach are experiencing. However, in our conversations with them, they have been willing to entertain only one solution, and that is to close the beach for some period of time. We believe this is a public access beach, and there are other ways to deal with the problems. We were asked to entertain a 45-day trial of closing the beach from 10 at night to 6:00 in the morning, and we believe that the trial is not valid, we don't even know the scope of the issue, we've requested that information several times, and we don't have enough information or a baseline on which to hold a trial. The Point of Americas told us themselves that most problems occur during the day, about 65% of the problems, so we don't understand what closing the beach at night will accomplish anyway. Um, we think that other remedies should be tried first, the extra police patrols, which have already started, parking enforcement, maybe some more trash receptacles to deal with the trash, an increase in private security, there are 13 buildings who are saying that they want this done. 13 buildings can certainly come up with some money for, um, extra private security. I don't know how much time I have left, because I can't see anything except my name.
You have a minute left.
I have a minute left, and in our first meeting, Hi stated that the goal is to close the gate permanently, which is obviously something that, as residents who enjoy the beach, we would object too strenuously. We really believe we should look at other remedies to keep our public beach open to the public at all times. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you, Joanne. Next is Annette Ross, to be followed by Hi Montero, to be followed by John Wilkinson. Annette, are you there?
I'm here, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, how, how's everyone? I just want to thank you for hearing this, we want to, I want to echo, echo exactly what Joanne just said. There are problems down at the beach, there are problems with parking, there's problems with trespassing, there's problems with trash. This all goes to what needs to be done in, uh, increasing security, both private and public. The police needs to up some patrols, and frankly, we believe that the buildings that are affected really should enjoin and increase their participation in the already existing private detail down there. It works, I've pulled the reports, uh, both from, uh, Fort Lauderdale PD and the private detail since August of last year, uh, when this all started, and the bulk of the problems, it seems to, to me, in our assessment and reading the reports, is it's mostly kids with beer, dogs, parking infractions, and occasional topless visiting German tourists. Some, uh, minor vandalism on some tires, but that could be retaliation amongst kids with each other. And, um, mostly, really, as I'm looking at this, it's kids with beer, going out to the jetty to drink. This is sort of a rite of passage for the city of Fort Lauderdale, to go out to the jetty and drink beer and, and celebrate spring break. I believe, I believe that if we just, uh, increase the security, both privately and publicly, there's a lot of residents down there that can enjoy, enjoin, and gather together and pay some small dollars. It could get the job done. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Hi Montero, followed by John Wilkinson, and then Mr. Linder.
Good afternoon, uh, this is Mayor and City Commissioners, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak this afternoon. I have met, uh, with Jeanette Robinson, Annette Ross, and John Wilkinson. And I met with them at the request of Ben Sorensen, our Commissioner. And the reason we met is because 13 HOAs had asked me to, present our issues to the commission, which we've done, I believe the mayor has received letters from the residents, pictures, videos of the issues that we're facing on a daily basis. And when I spoke to Joanne, Annette, and John, I never said, we want to close this access gate permanently. I never said that. I said, you know, in life, you can't get everything you want. What we're trying to do here is trying to work as neighbors to try to address an ongoing problem that's not going away, it's not a rite of passage. It's, it's the right of the residents to live in peace and tranquility in homes that they've purchased. And all we're asking for is, for a 45-day period, to lock the gate at 10:00 PM and open it at 5:00 AM, so if someone wants to see the sunset, they have no problem, if someone wants to see the sunrise, they have no problem, our security would lock it from 10:00 PM and open it up at 5:00 AM. And, and, and when you look at it, we're at the beginning of spring break, all we're asking for during that 45-day period, it's going to tell us two things, number one, are our problems going, decreasing because of this? And number two, how many residents are truly affected by the beach being locked between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM? How many beachgoers are really, of the residents at the Harbor Inlet, at Harbor Beach, and at the Surf Club are really impacted adversely by this? And I submit to you that no one is affected, uh, these residents, by the beach being locked between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, let's try it for 45 days. At the end of the 45-day period, period, we're going to determine whether our problems have decreased or have not decreased. If this is, if there's another solution, and that keeps talking, and so does Joanne about, you know, let's try different approaches. Let's try all the approaches we can, this is one approach only, and this is the request of the people that live along the beach, that's all we're asking for. And I don't think that what we're asking for is, is, is really unreasonable. If anything, it's quite reasonable, and I have explained this to the commission on, on prior occasions. You know, you've got to realize something, this beach, number one, east of the high watermark is public, but west of the high watermark is private. And the trash, the problems are, are extended into our private beach section, our private property is, is affected in the middle of the night, and I know that Mr. Sorensen just received an email today from our, our, uh, our manager, where she was telling, showing, sending him pictures of people urinating by our beach. And he's, and, and basically, Mr. Sorensen's response was, when this happens again, just call a non-emergency police number. Well, I, I'm not quite sure that this is going to be the solution here, but at least I appreciate that the Commissioner is listening to our problems. But having said that, that's all we're asking for, we're not asking to lock it permanently, we're, we're looking at this as one approach to an ongoing problem, and this will address whether the, the problems are going to decrease during those hours.
All right, great, thank you, Mr. Montero. John Wilkinson, and then Mr. Linder. Is John Wilkinson on the line?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Mayor and Commissioners, thank you, I'm the president of the Breakwater Surf Club Association, and yes, we did, we meet a couple of times with, uh, Mr. Montero, and he did express that he would like to close it all the time, but he understood that it was not possible. However, I would like to point out that the 65/35 percentage, with 65% of the problems occurring in the daytime, like Joanne said, we don't see what a nighttime closure is going to accomplish. Second, uh, thought is that, uh, yes, we have seen photographs of, uh, taken by residents at, uh, Point of Americas, in fact, one of them was of a nude young lady, and the comment was, we've been watching this for over an hour, well, in that time, they could have called the police, because the ordinance is clear about nudity on the beach, as well as many of these other, uh, ordinances, so, um, again, it's the issue of, you know, if you see something, say something, uh, like DHS encourages people to do. The other issue is, yes, Hi is right, that the, uh, in this case, the erosion control line is controlling rather than the 19-year mean high watermark, but that's clear for many, many places in the state of Florida, which is why north of here, every quarter mile, there's an access, pedestrian access between buildings, uh, to get to the beach. This beach, this is the only access within a mile of any of our homes, and in terms of consequences, while we fully understand that, uh, closing the beach, and by the way, it was done between 1993 and 2003, and a previous, uh, commission ordered it reopened on the basis that it was a public beach. But in any event, the, uh, the issue is that, um, what we're looking at is 500 units would be benefited by the closing, and over 1,300 units are neighborhoods, and every building that is not on the, on the beach now would not be benefited, in fact, it would be, uh, slightly negatively impacted. So we want to work with Point of Americas, but, um, a large number of our members and homeowners do not want the beach closed because of the salami effect, you do it for eight or nine hours now, and next thing you creep one hour either direction, and pretty soon, it becomes a major issue for us, again, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you so much. Mr. Linder. Mr. Linder is in the chambers, and he's stepping up to the podium. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you for your time, uh, Commissioners. I'm here to support Mr. Montero and Points of America in terms of, uh, the necessity for locking the, uh, locking the easement going to the beach. I bought my house 40 years ago, I live in Harbor Inlet, I go to the beach at least three times, four times a week. And, uh, I've enjoyed the beach very much, it's one of our greatest, uh, greatest benefits of, uh, living in this neighborhood. But over the years, we, we did have the, uh, I wouldn't say that, we did have the easement locked for a period of time, Bill Cole brought this up, uh, from 10 o'clock at night to 6:00 in the morning, and it was, uh, very effective. In the years that it's been open all night, between the spring breakers and the, uh, post-Fourth of July parties, I walk, uh, the easement, I've seen crushed beer cans, uh, bottles, uh, doobers, baggies of white powder, uh, dog crap all over the beach, all over the, uh, the easement, and, uh, this doesn't happen when we close the beach at night. There's a very effective police presence Saturdays and Sundays, who, if they see kids coming through with big coolers, they ask them to open, if they have alcohol, they turn them away, and they've been a great deterrent to, uh, to, uh, wild parties on the beach. But the bonfires, the liquor, uh, the loud music that takes place, uh, during the, uh, spring break, all hours of the night, um, is, uh, deterrent to anybody enjoying the beach. Uh, I, I see no reason why it shouldn't be closed, it shouldn't be locked up at 10:00 to 6:00 in the morning. Chip Lamarc, I want to compliment him, he's done a great job of making the ocean, uh, and the, uh, the sand very, uh, very clean, it's a, it's a wonderful sanctuary that we need in this time of, uh, of, uh, of COVID, and, uh, And he keeps it very clean, both the sand and the water. I don't see any plastic in the water, and it's a very safe environment.
I have to correct you there. I think it's our city staff, although we love Representative Lamarc. He's not out there picking up garbage. It's our city staff that's out there early in the morning every day, so let's come.
Well, they're doing a hell of a job. They rake the sand. The sand is pristine, and it's a wonderful environment.
Thank you.
We're going into the turtle nesting time, and this is not the time for wild parties, late-night parties on the beach. The turtles need their sanctuary as well. The pregnant mama turtles are going to be coming and laying their eggs, and they don't have to, we don't have to force them to go between wild bonfires on the beach. Thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item as a member of the public? Do you have someone? Who's that?
Hi. My name is Stefan Zanich. I'm a year-round resident and member of the board at POA Two. I'd like to touch on what Hi Montero said.
Sure, go right ahead.
Thank you. You know, my wife and I frequent the beach regularly. What we've witnessed over the past months, since the beaches, actually, since the beaches were reopened last year, is huge amounts of kids, lots of drinking, partying of all types during the day, and this usually carries over into the night. At night, it gets even rowdier. So even if we agree it's one-third happening at night, it's still one-third of the partying. I've witnessed destruction, disregard for public and private property. I've seen buoys ripped out of the ocean, which is a safety concern then for swimmers. We've seen signs torn down. We've seen the climbing of the walls and fences of POA. So also, you know, really trespassing on our property. We've witnessed aggressive behavior directed at the residents. We have some beach attendants, also the police officers, and this includes all kinds of obscenities. I've had a bottle thrown at me when I kindly, really kindly asked the group not to sink the empty bottles in the ocean. We've had residents have their beach bags gone through, and this all translates into maybe even a bigger concern, and that's for everyone's safety. Just a second. You know, not to mention the broken bottles, tons of trash, condoms, clothes. The city doesn't regularly come down here to clean the public portion of the beach. It's usually some residents. It's our beach attendants doing that. You know, the burden falls on us. We have our own deep police detail on the weekends, and we pay for that. But we still also have to call the extra police for support, and that sometimes takes hours for them to come, because it's not usually a priority. Again, the burden of policing sort of falling on our shoulders then. We have many photos, videos, statements by residents to back all this up. As was mentioned, some of them have even been sent to you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city commissioners. Really, I think to at least put a close on part of this activity, the locking of the gate for a trial period would help. It's part of a bigger solution, but it naturally would help. And, you know, this actually, you know, speaking with our police details, they've also recommended this in the past. Thank you for your attention.
Very good. Thank you so much for your opinion on this. Anybody else? We're good? Okay. Commissioner Sorensen.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it, and thanks to everyone who's shared. Maybe a good place to start, in addition to all the good feedback we just heard, is Allen. Do we have, do you have the property map? Does someone have that?
I don't. We do have it prepared. I think IT has it. Let's just get it pulled up on the screen.
Okay, so Chris, can someone just walk us through kind of what's what? I figure this will help understand, help everyone understand the property.
Yeah, I'll see if I can take a stab at that, and then we'll, we can go from there. Can we zoom in at all down towards the bottom corner? Okay, so Commissioner, this is what we've discovered are the different easements that surround the property that we're talking about. There's a utility and drainage easement to the south of either 50 or 65 feet, the utility and drainage easement to the west, and then a 50-foot walkway and utility easement and a 10-foot easement dedicated to public use that passes over the property, and you can see there terminates where the public beach begins. So that gives you some sense as to the different easements that surround the property.
Yep, great. And then, just so folks can see, so the gate is, why don't you kind of point to the gate so folks can understand?
It's the one, it's the easement that's, this is Allen Ball. That's the easement that's on top there, the 15-foot walkway and utility easement, public use, and the 10-foot walkway easement dedicated for public use on the top part, the top red line.
Yeah, I don't have a pointer under my control, so whoever, the pointer, if you could go over to the west. Okay, so you drew arrows to point to the easement. Yeah, but go over to the west if you can, right at its intersection with Southeast 20th Street. I think that's commissioners wanting to kind of highlight. Go now further to the east where it starts, right in there.
Great. And then, perfect. And then, if you go to the beach, a portion of the beach is private. Is that right, Chris? The yellow portion there?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Yep. And then, then we get into the public beach. The, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the county has jurisdiction over the jetties. Is that correct?
The actual jetty itself, I believe they do have some jurisdiction there. But that's, that's a limited portion of the public portion.
Yep. Okay, great. And I, I think that the private beach, I think the the private detail helps oversee some of that private beach area. Now, and this might be, if you can just keep that up, this would be a question for, so a couple of things I think is important to look at what we've already done, regardless of what we do with a beach access right now. What we've done already is Phil Thornburg, we've talked about putting trashcans. Have you been able to put trashcans out there on the beach?
So we'll have to.
So good afternoon.
There's Phil.
Yes, Commissioner, we did put a trashcan out there, and we also go by, we've been going by in the mornings. Now, we've added another afternoon since the traffic is starting to pick up with spring break. So we're going to be going in the morning and the afternoon. And we do clean up the easement and then the public beach area, but we do not go onto the private beach property.
Okay, perfect. And where have you put the trashcan, Phil, just so I'm tracking it?
I haven't actually seen it, Commissioner, but I, what I was asked them to do and what I was told was done. It was, it's down by the, by the end of the red mark there, where you see where it's at the end of the, towards the, so there is one at the entrance gate. And that's always been there, and then we added one down by, closer to the public beach.
Okay, got it. Okay, on that, that northern easement, kind of, is that?
That's correct.
Do you think, Phil, there would be a need for another one, like near the southern portion of that property, near the southern easement?
Well, I guess I would need to defer to the attorney on what is our property and not. But we could put some, we could put another one to the south, actually, out on the, if you go east of the high watermark, then of course, during high tide, it's going to be in the water. But if we go west, I'm not for sure what our ability to access that property and what we can do on that southern portion. We've always focused on the easement, not really on the south end.
Okay. What are you hearing, Phil, from your team that's going, so they're cleaning up twice a day? What are you hearing? Are you hearing anything in terms of what they're coming across?
Just an ask, and they said it's, you know, there is some trash out there from time to time, and it's mostly beer bottles and beer, you know, beer cans and, but at least in what their comment was, and maybe it's just because they do the entire beach area, but it's, you know, it's not, it's not exorbitant compared to the other areas of the beach that they clean on a daily basis as well.
Okay. Thanks. And Chris, in terms of drinking on the beach, just give us an update. What are the laws on that right now, you know, pre-COVID, during right now, and in the future?
Our beach is posted, and the public beach does not allow alcohol on it, and particularly when we have a high-impact event of, we otherwise call spring break. There's other things that are prohibited on the beach, but alcohol is consistently one of those.
Okay. And what, and Chris, maybe this is for you or Chief, if we see someone drinking on the beach, what should we do as residents?
So I'll turn that over to a police representative. Obviously, it is enforceable. It's enforceable on a priority basis, based upon other things that are going on in the city. But I'll let the chief handle what number people would call to have that type of response.
The city manager is correct. If someone observes a violation on the beach, they can go ahead, call the non-emergency number. It'll be put into the dispatch queue. We'll respond, and if they're caught in violation, they can either be physically arrested or issued a notice to appear.
All right, thanks. And what's that phone number, Chief, just so folks can hear?
954-763-Help, 4537. That's the non-emergency number.
Is littering an offense, Chief?
I believe it's a city ordinance violation. There is a state statute on it. I am not familiar with which one it is, but I can get the information to you.
Okay. What are, what are you seeing, as you look back on the calls for service here? What are you seeing in the past six months? What kind of, in this area?
So we've had four separate incidents for suspicious incident calls. There was two vehicle thefts, a larceny, and a Baker Act.
A Baker Act?
Yes, sir. A Baker Act.
And what's the geographic bounds for that, Chief? What are you, when you're saying that?
We pulled that information from the Harbor Inlet. A crime analysis did an analysis of the calls based on the 90-day timeframe, comparing November to February from 19 to 20 versus 20 to 21.
Okay. And so that's for the whole neighborhood, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What, now you've, you and I have talked about this, and you said you were going to be increasing patrols in the area. And what have, what have the patrols been seeing? What have they been hearing?
Well, from, the information I got from the increased patrols is that everybody was compliant when we asked them to do something. We haven't observed the sexual activity that was described. We've mostly observed younger crowds coming to the jetty to drink, but we haven't physically observed any violation. I think, like some of the residents said, the officers have been proactive, where they catch them with a cooler, and they tell them, "Hey, you're not allowed to drink on the beach," and they're turned away.
Yep. And nudity, Chief, if we see someone nude and so forth, what do we do with, what should we do as residents?
Same thing. Call the non-emergency number. It is a violation of a city ordinance. Can't be nude on the beach. So if you call us and we observe it, the officers can handle it at the time.
Okay. And tell me a little bit about, because that was news to me about the, talking about the parking enforcement. Tell us, what was your, what was your question, and what was the response from the building?
So this issue initially came up a few months ago. I want to say back in October. I'd have to look back at my emails. But from what I remember, it was in the beginning of October. I think you had sent some complaints to our office. We looked into it. I did get ahold of the off-duty coordinator. The Disher commander went ahead and made contact with several of the buildings, along with our neighborhood action team officers, to try to work in partnership with the associations. So, because we can't tow on their property, because it's private property. But if they enter into a partnership to where they're willing to do that, we could certainly enforce when people were towing in residents' property. The information I'm being told is there's a limited amount of public parking in the area.
Yep. But they weren't interested in enforcing that?
Correct. We were told there was no interest.
Okay. Okay, let's, thank you, Chief. Let's, if I had a question for Hi, if we can, can he be unmuted, or?
Is Hi Montero there?
Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Montero?
I'm here.
Okay, great.
Hey, Hi, it's Ben.
Hey, Ben, how are you?
Hey, good. What, would there be any interest in an added trashcan or two south of the easement there, the northern easement where the gate is?
You know what? I think adding trashcans is always, is always a healthy thing. I don't think anyone's going to object to more trashcans, but let me just interject something here. Listening to everyone here, Ben, the feeling that I'm, that people, what people don't realize is that we don't have a lifeguard down here. You've got a hell of a combination of people drinking on these jetties. If they jump off these jetties and they get injured, or they get killed, or they become quadriplegics because they're doing this, there is no lifeguard station. You're talking about a public beach. It's a section of a beach that is public with no lifeguard. Why don't we do this? Why don't we lock it, as we're suggesting, from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 or 6:00 a.m. for 45 days? And let's bring in a lifeguard. Let's have a lifeguard assigned to that south end near the jetties. I think the presence of a lifeguard at that location may deter some of the activities during the day. And certainly, if the lifeguard sees somebody drinking, and he can alert the police then, perhaps they would listen to a lifeguard. Perhaps he is seen as an authority figure, or she is seen as an authority figure. I just think for us to disregard what is taking place, we're kicking the can down the road, and this is going to be a major problem. It is now, and it's going to get worse. Let's take the blinders off. Let's look and see what we can do right now. At night, 10:00 to 10:00 p.m. to 5:00, 6:00 a.m., let's see what happens for 45 days. In the meantime, we welcome the trashcans. In the meantime, let's get a lifeguard posted at that location in the South Beach section closest to the jetties.
Yeah, thanks, Hi. I actually think that's an interesting point about the lifeguard. Chris, what's our, or Phil, kind of what's the closest lifeguard station? And what's the, I don't know the distance between stations, and is that viable to have one farther south?
So that would be Ocean Rescue that's out there as opposed to lifeguard. And it's in the, I believe the furthest one to the south is about Be Ocean geographically, if that gets you in proximity down there by that south parking lot.
Yep, and so distance.
It's far away, Commissioner.
Yeah. What's the, what's the app, what's the intended distance between Ocean Rescue stations?
I do not know. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay, thanks. I'd like to, yeah, hear a little bit more about that, because I think it might, you know, maybe, maybe this is, this is, you know, too far of a distance from a Ocean Rescue station. Okay, so Mayor, I think in conclusion, I mean, we've, I don't think we've turned a blind eye. I think we've amped up. Fort Lauderdale PD has done a very good job increasing patrols, parks and rec, increasing trash pickups. I think we can do more, and I think the trashcans are part of that, and just increase focus here. I think looking into the added lifeguard station is a great idea. I mean, I never even thought about that. And then there's also a piece, Mayor, of the parking. I think that's, that's something that I think is one of the, one of the systemic issues. So I'd like to keep working on that with the neighborhood around. I think there's some opportunity to increase parking enforcement there. I think there's some areas that we could landscape and prevent some of the public parking that's really illegal. So I'd like to keep working on that, Mayor, but I think we're, we're doing, we're heading in a good direction and keeping this open and moving forward with the increased focus.
So it's not your recommendation as a district commissioner to, to lock up the gate between 10:00, 8:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m.?
Correct, it's not. I think we can keep doing what we're doing, increase this focus on parking and so forth, and let's, you know, let's keep working on this and see, seeing, you know, as we keep spending time on this, if we can improve things, which I think we really can. which I think we really can.
Does anyone else have any comments?
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, go ahead.
So talk to me about this gate a little bit, um, because I'm thinking about the gate in Birch State Park that was also put in. And, but there was pedestrian access for the neighbors around that area. When we locked this, uh, area off to residents originally, i- is it, is there a key? Is there a lock with a key that residents have access to? Does anyone know?
Probably is a question for parks.
Because it, it seems like that might be a reasonable next step. Lock it and give everyone a key. I mean, 1,300 keys or a code or something. I think that's what Birch State Park and Dolphin Isles. And I remember, um, being a part of that process years ago, actually my husband was. But if we're talking about the neighbors want access, which seems like it's a reasonable request, but they don't want a lot of outside visitors, this might not be the best place for visitors to come enjoy our sunny beaches. We do have a lot of other public access that they can enjoy. I, I just think it seems like the residents want access and the condos don't want it to be overused. So maybe we put up.
Well, it seems to, if.
I'm sorry. If I could just interject, uh, quickly, our offer, our, our suggestion during that 45-day period is to, we would lock the gate at Point of America's, our guard would lock it at 10:00 PM, reopening it at 5:00 AM. And during that interim, it'll identify how many residents really want to use it during those seven hours. And if there's somebody at two in the morning who wants to go meditate at the beach, they would just go to our, our gate and ask the security, show their identification and ask the, the security guard to open the gate for them. And that would be done. It's only 200 feet from our security gate. So that's something, and, and just to follow up on what Mr. Sorensen said, don't worry about the parking. These people are Ubering. They're taking Ubers down to our, our building. They're taking lifts. They're getting rides. I mean, they, they, they know that there's not enough parking space there. That's why they're taking these services.
We heard those concerns. I appreciate that. Hi, appreciate you bringing them up. I'm trying to find if there's any way to compromise and meet the needs of both sides. Um, I actually kind of think it's reasonable to lock the gate from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM also. But I appreciate the property owners who live around this area. And if they want to walk to the beach and watch the moonrise at 11:00 PM, you know, maybe they should be able to. But I just think that once again, we could look at what's happening at Birch and Dolphin Isles and, um, see, is it possible to give them access?
Commissioner, the, the people that use the gate in Dolphin Isles, that they, they're paid members in, uh, they have a, like a, a paid membership into the park, the state park. Not everybody, not everybody gets the code for the gate in Dolphin Isles into Birch State Park.
Okay. Well, it's, it's still a gate with a code that residents can have access to. So maybe we could just use the same system. It's just what I'm thinking. And we, we don't want to charge our residents. I just, thank you for pointing that out. But I think, I don't know. I just think that could be a good first step. Give the residents the code, shut the gate, lock it.
Let me ask you this, Commissioner. Um, because what I'm hearing is that, um, there's concern about leaving the, leaving the, uh, public beach open late at night because they feel that there's, um, there's activity going on there that they, they're trying to, they're trying to, um, prevent. Most of the people that live there, I can't imagine are using the beach between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. So I'm not sure how much of an inhibition that would create, an obstacle that would create for the, uh, whether you're living in one of the towers or whether you're living in a single family home. I don't think that many people are using the beach during that time. So the request today is should we be able to do a trial, do a trial period of 30 to 45 days of closing the beach between 10:00, 8:00 PM and 5:00 AM? Uh, I'm not sure that's going to be, uh, a tremendous burden on anybody to see if that experiment works. I don't think it's going to work because I remember when I was a kid, and that was just a couple of years ago, uh, we used to hike fences and gates and nothing stopped us. But if that gives a comfort level to some people to see if the experiment could work, I'm ready, I'm prepared to do it. I don't think that locking it all during the day is appropriate. I think it's a public beach. People should have public access and, uh, but I don't think locking it in the, in the wee hours of the night and the morning, uh, are going to, are going to inhibit the public use of this area. So, I mean, I would be game for trying the experiment that Mr. Montero suggests. Let their, let their guard at Points of America be responsible for opening, closing the gate. And, um, we have nothing to lose by just seeing if it works.
Mayor, we have everything to lose. This is a public beach. We cannot limit a public.
Nobody's using it between 10:00 and 5:00. It sits.
That's, one, what evidence do you have of that? And number two, what evidence do you have that of wrongdoing occurring between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM? The police are not hearing it or seeing it.
So you're saying that the, that our constituents that live in the area are making, they're making use of the beach during that time period?
I have, many want to be able to use it during that time. Yes. Just as with the rest of our beach. There are people that go, you know, out on the beach at, at strange hour, hours.
Commissioner Sorensen, what about my code idea? What about giving the residents, the 1,300 people, the key or the code, just like we do in Birch State Park?
Yeah. So I, I understand your thinking there, but then my concern is you're, we're limiting it to those 1,300 people. Someone who lives in Coconut Creek has as much right to our public beach as on an immediate resident, I think. I think we have to provide fair and equal access to whoever it is.
So you don't think an experiment, uh, to see if this has any impact would be worthwhile? You just don't want to do it at all?
I, I don't think it's appropriate to restrict access to our beach, our public beaches.
Okay.
Come to the gulp.
Okay. Um, uh, any other comments on this from the commission?
Mayor, how does the city attorney feel about locking the gate on the public beach?
He's not happy about it.
No, it's really, uh, uh, an operational decision. I mean, we control that walkway, um, because of the easement. So it really comes down to, it's not really a legal decision. Obviously it is, it is a public access, so it's for the perpetual use of the public as, as dedicated. So to the extent that it would be heavily restricted, that may run counter to the dedication. That would be probably issue.
And is there a definition of heavily?
Nope. No.
No.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Let us, uh, so we're not to take any action other than to ask the city manager to beef up enforcement, add a garbage can or two and, uh, try to monitor the situation as best as possible. That's the recommendation of the district commissioner. Any, any further comments on this? Okay. There being none. All right. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate all those who participated in this discussion. Uh, that completes our, that completes our agenda. We now go into commission reports. Folks, I have a small PowerPoint presentation to make regarding our trip to Las Vegas in LA concerning the Boring Company. Do you want me to do it after your commission report? So you want me to do it now considering the time constraints we have?
After.
Want me to do it after? Okay. Yeah. Okay. That's fine. Uh, so start with you, Commissioner, uh, Maritis. Do you have any report to make today?
I do. I'm just going to bring up one issue that I would like to get, uh, your, the commission's consensus or ideas on. And, um, I brought it up earlier. I just want to bring it up again because it is a little bit time sensitive in terms of the budgeting process. I just want to talk about the storm water hybrid rate calculation. And one of the unintended consequences, I think it's unintended really, is, um, how it adversely impacted some of our schools and especially, you know, I have a lot of private schools in District One as well as you all do. But I, I have had some reports and some, um, new, once everyone got their trim notices, a lot of my schools, uh, have doubled because going from like 25,000 a year to 50,000 a year for an annual stormwater assessment. And I did have to explain to them this wasn't a one-time assessment. This would be going on for what, 20 years? I don't know how long our bond, 30 years or?
Or until the rates amend.
Or, or it will go up even more because we may have to increase that amount to do additional stormwater improvements and mitigation in our area. So I just, I don't know if there's a way to give some relief to, I, I mean, I know we have a hybrid, so I know we have different rate structures for different properties, whether it's a residential or a condo or a commercial property. And I think all of this got lumped into commercial properties. So I'm wondering, and, and I do want to preface obviously this conversation too by saying, you know, our public schools pay zero for any of the stormwater assessments. And I believe a lot of our other, there are other properties around the city that are also exempt. Uh, if they're on city property is my understanding, like does the Museum of Discovery and Science pay anything for stormwater? Because are they on city property? I don't know if they do. I believe there could be some exemptions for some additional properties if they're.
I don't know that I've ever looked. I, I do very, very familiar with the public schools because that's statutory issue.
We talked about that. I was, I was actually looking at vcpa.net or whatever. I was trying to kind of look at different people's property, you know, uh, bills. And I thought that was interesting. I couldn't, I couldn't find the museum. I was trying to see how they would be adversely affected. And then I thought, I think they're on city property.
Laura will probably know.
Yeah. So Laura, Laura, you might know too, but then I'm thinking that might be another, uh, group of businesses, you know, exempt from our stormwater rate calculation. And I'm just wondering, is, A, would you as a commission even have the desire to engage in a conversation about any, you know, relief for some of our, our private schools? If you don't have that desire, then obviously this conversation won't go any further. And then we can have those other conversations about additional properties that might be exempt throughout the city. So my concern is this is only going to go up. I, I, I do have a concern, obviously. You, you know, all my schools are, are, their bills have doubled and none of this work is happening in District One, which I do support all of us paying for citywide improvements. And I know we will get improvements one day, but it is a, it is difficult when you're paying all this money and you're not getting any relief also. So I don't know. I'm just looking for, um, ideas, some thoughts, um, from the rest.
Mayor, mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner? Commissioner Maritis, um, I, I agree with you, but I don't like when you use the word my schools, uh, in my district. Because if you look at the examples you have made, you'll find it in each, in every district. Private schools, churches, um, other nonprofits that all got hit with this assessment and people are calling in to all districts screaming bloody murder. I voted against the assessments, um, uh, but that's my vote. But my point is, uh, if we're going to do it or even take a look at it, I would just, uh, suggest that we look at relief for every entity, uh, that has been impacted, uh, in, in such a manner. In, in which the way that you described, uh, the private schools and what happened. My second, um, issue would be, uh, maybe Alan can answer. I thought some were doing these discussions over the years. Um, when I asked the same question, uh, we, we couldn't do that. Is it, can, can we do it, Alan? Or?
The, the exemption or, or the?
Exemption or trying to alleviate, uh, give some relief to, uh, these categories, if you will?
And the current posture, my opinion right now is no, because we've, we've, we have a methodology. We have an assessment that's been calculated. Um, any deviation from that is a point we're going to have to go through a validation process that goes through the court. And we, we essentially, the only way to do it would be to redo the whole thing.
And that's what I've been told since I became a commissioner, uh, uh, mayor, that we couldn't do it. But I, I know that we, a lot of things that we can't do and, um, having experienced two commissions, um, um, I've seen us go back and, and undo things, uh, to, uh, to, to right a wrong, uh, if you will, and not saying we're wrong with the assessments, just saying that, once we did this, uh, we saw a, um, in my opinion, a landslide of folks that, that, uh, got caught with these assessments and it's, it is just tripling and doubling and it's, it's a lot of money. I have First Baptist, uh, right downtown. I mean, you should see their bill. And I can go, uh, right to, um, Mount Orleans, uh, Pine Grove or, you know, any, I can go to St. Thomas. You know, I can go to, I can just keep naming them. And folks have called me about, uh, this assessment and, uh, and asking for relief, not saying that they, they, they don't want to pay. And so if we can find, um, a way, Alan, you know, I would entertain it, uh, if, if the rest of the commission has the appetite for it. Um, but if we do do it, I think we need to look at it for, for all entities that fit that criteria.
Yep. And, and I agree, Commissioner McKenzie, that obviously we looked at this citywide. I was just, I was referring to some of the, um, evidence I have from District One. You know, we, we, um, it's kind of like a, you know, um, our save our homes policy. It goes up 3% a year. I, when these entities got hit from, and it doubled from 25,000 to 50,000, that's a big hit. And, and nobody was asking me either to, you know, wipe away all of it, but just wow, could we tier this a little bit more? Or have some kind of different rate structure where we didn't get, we, we weren't doubled overnight. So maybe, I mean, once again, do we, do we look at, I mean, don't we, uh, there's something to it. And other taxes where, you know, it can't go up more than a certain amount a year. I, I just think it, it went up a lot. And, and I know we do have private commercial businesses too that, you know, could be thinking, sure, I, I'd love relief also. So I know we have to decide as a commissioner, what, what groups do we want to probably look at? And, and maybe we are just looking at nonprofits. I don't know. We already had the nonprofit conversation earlier. But, you know, we're, we're talking about giving more money to nonprofits. Maybe we should just charge them reasonable stormwater rates and we wouldn't be flooded with all these, you know, applications for, for additional grant opportunities. I don't know. So I would probably support looking at maybe our, you know, not-for-profit entities, which would include a lot of our schools and other, you know, entities in, in Fort Lauderdale. I, I don't know what that financial amount would look like. I don't know if it's, you know, too big, but just, uh, you know, kind of going back to last year's number, maybe plus 5% or something, but just not completely doubling it overnight.
The only, the, the thing is that when, when our city staff, uh, made a proposal, gave us several options as to how we're trying to raise money, the whole idea was to raise money through our rate payer system in order to address a, a problem that we've had for many, many years, which we left unaddressed. And, you know, this past fall, we experienced some serious flood problems. And, um, and the question is always, you know, where are we going to get the money to, to deal with these flood problems? So, um, the city commission ultimately passed an ordinance establishing a rate system in which to raise money. So if we decide to give a break to some, uh, rate payers, then the balance of the burden is going to go on everybody else because we still need to raise the money. Those seven adaptation action areas that, uh, were defined by the city commission a number of years ago, are now being worked on. And part of it's being worked on through, um, through CIP and part of it's being worked on through bond money. Uh, and, uh, and so while your, while your request has merit, because we have sympathy for, for nonprofits who don't really have, um, market rate abilities to generate funds. At the same time, we still need to have the same amount of money to pay for the same work that needs to get done. In fact, what we learned is we even had to include another area, the Merrose Park, Merrose Manor's area, which got seriously flooded, which wasn't even included in the original budget and which is now targeted for, for, um, uh, stormwater remediate, uh, remediation work. Um, so we, instead of, instead of the amount of money we thought we could budget from before, we now have to budget even more money to try to help those folks in that area, which got significantly impacted. So unless we agree to find ways to raise money, I don't know how, how we do it equitably. I know we try to do it fairly. And, um, and I think that was the procedure we established last time. So I'm, so I. And, and I think that was the procedure we established last time. So I'm, so I don't know if we did give these nonprofits a break, like schools and churches, like you speak of, where do you want the money to be raised from? You want us to raise the rate on the individual property owner, the homeowner? Is that what you're asking? Is that the only option?
No, but no, and I'm not the one that's raising this, this issue. It's Commissioner Maris. But I'm saying, if we entertain it, I just want it to be across the board. Now, what I did debate during this whole rate increase and assessment was how we calculated it. So maybe we go back and look at the calculations for some of these larger parcels. And a break probably could just arbitrarily happen if it's, if we take some of the denominators out of there. Cause we had a, an example, I'm not advocating for this, this property. During the, the discussion of rates, where Regal Trace talked about how their property was spread out, and how they got three different categories to calculate, along with trips, mass, and I think it was another one, and how it just tripled. And they were just saying, we'd rather just be assessed based on trips and minus this or minus that. But there was some equation or factor that could have just changed the, no, no one's saying not do it at all. But how did these entities just get smashed from 75,000 now to 225,000 dollars, you know, just with our assessment? So if we discuss it, I think that's one angle we can look at. And then we look at some of the ideas that Commissioner Maris was talking about, if that's something we have an appetite for.
Well, again, if, if we do decide to make an adjustment for those nonprofits, then, then the unintended consequence is that families will end up shouldering the additional burden.
No, we, we don't want to do that. I don't think we're saying that, Mayor. And I, I wish we wouldn't phrase it like that. We're just talking about these entities that got hit hard. Yes, the residents got hit hard. It is probably a harder pill to swallow. We're talking about $75,000 going to 225,000. That's impact. Or 10,000 going to 30,000. That's a tough cross to bear. So I don't think we're going to go back now and say, well, residents, now you have to pay us $2,000 instead of your 185,000, 85,000, 85, 185 dollar assessments. I don't want to put those two out there and confuse the audience. Let's just look at what she's talking about.
I know what she's.
Bring it back, if we want to do it, but not, not say because we're going to take it from here, we're going to throw it on the, on the rest of the residents. No, we need to look at it. If we're going to do it, we, we entertain it. If not, we move forward. Like she says, she says, she suggested it earlier. So I mean, it's not saying residents, now you're going to take the brunt of it. No, let's look at it.
Sure.
Staff come back and tell us.
Commissioner, I know we're getting ready, or we already have, to, to float this bond. I mean, if we floated a little less, is there a way to give any relief to a category now? I mean, we want to do all the work, obviously, but is there any way in, you know, when we are taking the debt to maybe take a little less, or maybe the rates are a little bit lower right now? So we've seen a little relief. I don't, I want to do the work, and I don't want to pay any more money for it. So that's, sorry, Chris.
Good luck with that.
Looking for Santa Claus.
Good luck with that.
Yeah.
So maybe I'll take it from one perspective and then let the city attorney take it from a different perspective. I can take it from the perspective of saying, we could look at the rate and make different assumptions when we do revenue sufficiency. And that would determine a different potential rate structure, or would result in needing less borrowed money to do projects. We would have to target that and say, we wanted to do 175 million instead of 200 million, recognizing that that's really targeting the first seven neighborhoods, the, the full amount. So in order to sufficiently back those bonds to be able to borrow that money to do that work, we based the revenue sufficiency model on $200,000 worth of debt. I'll turn it over to the city attorney, because I think.
Yeah, but, but, but Chris, now I want you, you all to be honest here. Okay. Because I brought these same questions up during the assessment period, right? And all I got was we couldn't do what couldn't do. Now, explain something to me. Now you're saying we can adjust the rate. So I don't, I don't, I don't want you doing it because we're asking you. I need to know what our true snapshot is in terms of what we have to do that, like the mayor indicated, in terms of work to do, and how much it's going to cost us. Now you're saying we can, you know, we can adjust the rate, which that's the question I asked earlier. Can we go back and recalculate something? So it's either we can do it, or we can't. But back when we did this, you and your staff said, we have, we had to do this, and it's going to cost X amount of dollars, and there was no leniency. There was no wavering. So how, how come today you can recalculate? Did we just all of a sudden run into some more money?
No, I don't think I said that. What I said was that when we did the revenue sufficiency modeling to determine the rate structure, we used the assumption that we were going to borrow $200 million.
Right.
We could use an assumption that we're going to borrow $150 million.
But then that would go against what the mayor said. We don't, and what even Commissioner Maris, we don't want to take away from projects. We want to see if we do this, how would it impact the bottom line? And you could tell us. I don't want you to say lower this to get that. No, we can't do it, because it's going to create this type of an impact. That's all we want. I just want real information so I can make a informed decision.
I do not, I, I do not have that magic wand. So I, there's no way to do $200 million worth of work and only borrow $150 million.
And that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you, sir.
Mayor? Yes, Vice Mayor.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, city attorney. Sorry.
No, I just was going to pipe in, because Chris had asked me to, the city manager had asked me to pipe in. But the, the problem we have, regardless of how much money you're going to borrow, how much it's going to cost to do improvements, the methodology that you proved can't be deviated from at this point because of the validation process. So even if you were to leave it as is, so two scenarios. One, you, you start tweaking it and changing it, and for certain nonprofits or certain types of entities, your methodology has changed. And now you can't necessarily say that it's been fairly apportioned. So you'd have to redo the entire study.
Okay.
Then on the other side, if you want to subsidize, because it had been suggested that we stick with the methodology, but that we subsidize us through the, through the general fund with regards to credits and things like that. So that's also problematic, because when you go through the validation process, you're going to go and say, this is our methodology, but not really, because we're not really going to be charging this. We're actually going to supplement and subsidize that through our general fund. That's going to be a problem when you're trying to borrow money. So you're in a position right now where if you are going to make any kind of changes for those particular entities or nonprofits, then you're, you really have to start the process over again. And the third factor that I would just throw in is, as we've kind of seen today, we start talking about schools, then we start talking about churches, then we start talking about other nonprofits. You open up the door. And all of a sudden, you're going to have a lot of buildings in Fort Lauderdale owned by nonprofits. So yeah, it's going to affect your bottom line there as well. So from all those particular factors, we're just in a posture right now where those types of changes really would, wouldn't be feasible. You'd have to go back and start over.
Okay. So we're still back, okay.
And I, actually, what the city attorney just said is just about almost exactly what I was going to say, because I just think this is a slippery slope. And you open the door, and I don't know how you apply this evenly. It can't be just private schools, because there's a lot of other, you know, organizations out there that's not-for-profits. And then I hear a lot of times, well, you know, churches don't pay property taxes. So some people pay property taxes, some people don't pay property taxes. So I hear all those arguments, but I, I, I think, Mayor, it's a slippery slope for us to, to start looking at these kinds of changes at this point in time.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you have any report to make today?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Commissioner Maris, you're finished?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. No problem. Yes, very quickly, I did want to congratulate Howard Steinholz on many years as president of the Seven Isles Homeowners Association. He's recently stepped down. I attended their annual meeting the other evening. And Kathleen Mareo is the new president, and she's already doing an incredible job. I attended the Bonnet House Board of Directors on the 18th of February. There had been two, since we last met, two solid waste working group meetings, February 19th, and then also yesterday, March 1st. I'll be getting ready to prepare a presentation, because soon the cities will have to take some action and a vote. And I'll, I'll get all that information to you as well. I very much enjoyed listening to the Fort Lauderdale State of the Market presentation on the 24th. Mayor, you were part of the panels, and they had a lot of really excellent panels all day. It was very encouraging to hear how bullish all of these different sectors were on Fort Lauderdale. No matter what we're talking about, it was very encouraging, very positive. I participated with the County Cultural Division on a program the other evening, fueling ingenuity, creative industries and the creative economy. And my topic was government as catalyst. Congratulations. That was the first of its, in the series. Also, if you haven't seen it yet, please get out and check out Light the Night through March 7th, where the Broward County Governmental Center, Museum of Art, and also Society, the high-rise, those three buildings are, it's a public art project, all about light and motion. It's, it's very cool. Thursday, February 25th, we had our District Two Neighborhood President's Roundtable Meeting. I also participated in the Andrews Avenue Bridge Design Review, and attended that evening, the Idyllwild Annual Meeting. Coming up, we've got Victoria Park Civic Association tomorrow, the International Swimming Hall of Fame Board of Directors Meeting, Sailboat Bend, and Art 13 Event on Northeast 13th Street on Saturday, March 13. Just a couple of comments. There's been a lot of disturbing pitbull attacks on Las Olas Isles, specifically Isle of Capri. Chris, I know you're, you're aware of this, but you know, when you told me yesterday that we've had six or seven calls to animal control, that is very scary. And I know that people are concerned that this is going to escalate and not just animals being attacked, but people. So I just wanted to make sure that we are really on top of this situation. It's a really dangerous situation. I also wanted to mention, I know I've mentioned this in the past, but I do think it's a good time to perhaps revisit creating an EMS Advisory Board. And lastly, just in full transparency, I did send an email to the city attorney and to the city auditor requesting specific information before our BEMR discussion on the 16th of March. I want to make sure that the public has in their backup, when that agenda goes out, all of the answers. I want them to see the current lease. I want them to see the lease that the city attorney's been working on. I requested an analysis of the current lease and the proposed lease, and a lot of different pros and cons. And I just wanted to share that with everyone, because I really do think that that should be a memorandum for all of us to view and read. And then I want to make sure that all of that information is provided in the backup when that agenda goes out for the meeting. And basically, that's pretty much it. Oh, one more thing, and I did mention this to Alan. Alan, I don't know what the plans are for the Charter Review Board to be meeting. But I think it's really important that we do compile that list of topics. Also, back in 2016, the city was presented, speaking of Charter Review, the city was presented with over 1,000 petitions talking about public land for public purpose. I think it was either as an ordinance or Charter Review. I'd like to revisit that conversation going forward, and, and see what we can do and cannot do with regards to either an ordinance, or a Charter Review. There's a lot of information that was submitted in 2016. So I just wanted to make sure that we start to look at that topic again. And that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I think what you're referring to is the, the community submitted 1,000 signatures and asked the commission to put on the, the next election cycle, a referendum to determine whether or not public land should be used for public purpose. And the city attorney at that time, it indicated that the, that the, the measure failed to, it did not, was not legally sufficient in terms of its wording, in order to be able to be presented to the public. It was at that time that the city commission had an opportunity to itself determine whether or not it should be put on, on the ballot. The commission at that time declined to do so. So I think that's the status of that right now. So I think that if it does go forward, it needs to be submitted to the Charter Review Board. And I would support that. And hopefully, the Charter Review Board could, could make its recommendation to the city commission as to what it should do with that, with that measure.
Exactly. And I don't know what their schedule is, and that's why I was bringing it up. And I'm sure that if that's something that they would consider and then make their recommendation to us, I'm sure there's lots of other topics that we could, you know, come up with for that, for that board to consider. So obviously, it would be more than just that one item that would be considered by, by the voters. That's it for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McKenzie, do you have a report? Commissioner McKenzie, are you there?
Yeah, I'm on mute. Yeah, just a couple of things. One is, the Historical Sister organization had their virtual parade and festival this Saturday at 10 a.m. Mayor, you know, because you participated with some form of a donation or support. And it was a huge success. And the whole theme was remembering and honoring Ms. Margaret Haney Birch. You see her in my background, along with the Hot 105 host, James T. That's from the last year, when we had it, February of last year. So I want to commend them on, on doing that in a, in a safe way. And we look forward to, to the reopening of, of, of the city, and, and festivals and, and, and events coming back to the, to the streets next year. So I just wanted to mention that. And I want to just ask a couple of questions. I got a concern with the, with the water damages we have in City Hall. Accidents happen all the time, and I know we're mitigating it. But I, I had to come into the office today, because as you know, I was late for the first conference meeting, but I couldn't, none of my technology would work. So I had to come to City Hall. And I saw some of the things that were happening on some of the floors, in particular, the seventh floor. And as I kept looking, and I don't want his clarification, number one, I saw where we installed carpet on top of old carpet. And I heard during this flooding, that the carpet, the old carpet, and there was a vapor barrier, there, it, that's, it held the water. And then when that water was released, it started, you know, trickling down to, to, to other floors. Whether or not, that's true, but that's, that's what I got, gathered. But I know we have mold mitigators and, and water restoration crews in the building. I know each time that they test or remove a tile, drywall, or what have you, the mold could possibly be spreading even further. So it will expand the scope of our work. But my concern was, when I inquired about the carpet, why wasn't it removed when we replaced it? And I've gotten on more than one answer, Chris, and just correct me if I'm wrong, that the reason why we put the new carpet over the old carpet, not that you, not that you did this, was because we have asbestos at the bottom of the old carpet. And if we remove that carpet, then we have to mitigate the asbestos. So if there's asbestos in the building, which I don't know this to be true, it should be mitigated. It shouldn't be covered up. I'm not saying anyone did anything. I'm just saying what I, I looked at, and I want you to help me understand, why do we put carpet over old carpet? And is there asbestos, you know, underneath that, that carpet? Because the whole time I was in there today for the short period, actually, a couple of hours, with technical support, both of us was, were sneezing and, and, you know, things just going on because of the conditions. So I know we can mitigate this stuff. I do it in my profession. But I know that when I discover mold, asbestos, there is a mitigation process I have to follow to remove that. to remove that before I can do anything else, if I decide to disturb it. So was the recommendation is not to disturb it and just put another layer of carpet over there? Or can someone on your staff go back that far to find out what, you know, what happened? Just help me understand where we are with the water restoration. And second, is there, or was there asbestos underneath that carpet?
Yeah, so let me take a stab at that. So when we had the fire sprinkler head, caused some damage on the eighth floor and the seventh floor. When we respond to that kind of damage, we hire professionals that are certified to do the water removal and remediation as they do. They brought in all sorts of equipment. They're the ones that determine when things are dry and ready to be rehabbed. We will do air sampling, as we have done from time to time in City Hall. It's no surprise that when you have heat and moisture, whether it's at City Hall or any building in South Florida, that you run the risk of having mold, and there's ways to remediate that. I can tell you, and I've heard this, although I've never seen it, that there's multiple layers of carpet on the seventh floor. There may even be a tile floor underneath the multiple layers that are there. When we were installing that carpet, the recommendation was to do an overlay so that we did not disturb what was underneath it. And so that apparently is an industry-accepted practice in installing new carpet in a facility. But if we take it any more technical than that, I'm going to have to turn it over to our facilities group or the professionals that we hire to do the remediation itself. But this is not work we do ourself. We hire experts to do it, and they were quick to respond the day that we had the sprinkler head issue.
And I agree with everything you're saying, but what I'm asking you, my second question was, and I said that a process that is acceptable, acceptable by the industry is to cover, and I also said, alluded to the same fact. And you went a step further and said that there's tile as well. So has anyone during any of these applications noted that we have asbestos underneath tile, carpet, or between those which would adhere to the cement floor or concrete floor that we have there as well? Is there anywhere, or any?
Let me turn it over to our facilities folks and see if they can answer directly. And I see Phil and Enrique both on the meeting. The Parks Department in our city runs our facilities, so let me take-
Yeah, let me start, City Manager and Commissioner. So Enrique can speak to this more, but you're exactly right, Commissioner McKenzie. From what we understand, there is tile, and there's carpet. There was carpet, and then there was the new carpet that was installed a few years ago. So there's at least three layers. But as I understand it, and Enrique can speak to it, is that the idea was to sense the asbestos, if there's asbestos and understanding the age of the facility, and if there's tile there, it's probably positive that there is asbestos in the tile, or in the glue under the tile. But it is common that you can just overlay that with carpet, or in this case, two layers of carpet, if you're not disturbing the asbestos. And that is what was decided, and that's what was done a while back. But I'll defer to Enrique as well, if he wants to add any more to that.
No, that's exactly what I was going to say. And it's better if you don't, it's recommended that you don't disturb the asbestos unless you have to.
I get all that.
That's when you start pulling, that's when you start pulling the thread.
I get all that. Here's the problem. Here's the problem I'm having. We have identified this building as a sick building anyway. We have been taking precautionary measures to, you know, paint, move ceiling tiles, and do minor renovations on floors. But when water penetrates, you know, it doesn't just stop, you know, at the carpet or at the top of tile. So typically what happens when you call in a restoration company, they have to test for mold, asbestos, or anything that's environmentally harmful. And they hand you a report and say, these are the things we have to look at. So now that we're at the restoration of the water, did anyone identify asbestos as being underneath one of those layers? Because if it's identified, then we have to mitigate, if my memory serves me correctly.
Yeah. So those assessments are in the process of being done now, and we should have those reports.
But we got people in the building. And I was in the building today against my wishes, but I couldn't access the meetings, and that was technology. But, you know, and as I walked around, it just piqued my interest. And I just don't want us to put anybody in harm's way. And I wanted to talk about this, you know, at this time, because I can't talk to my colleagues, you know, outside of this conference. And typically, I don't bring up issues, but this concerns me, and I just want us to be careful on how we navigate forward this. It makes sure we take all the steps, since we do have the building kind of broken down now. Now's the time to, you know, to deal with that if we have to. So I expect a report back about whether or not there is asbestos somewhere in those layers. But I'm sure it is in a building that old and tile too. So, I mean, that's typical. But has it been disturbed? And, you know, is it an issue? And you don't have to answer now, but get back to us. And thank you for giving me that report.
All right. Thank you so much, Phil. And please get back with the Commissioner on that. Mr. Sorensen, Commissioner Sorensen, do you have any report today?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two items. One, this past Thursday, February 25th, was a year ago that Mayor Justin Flippin passed. And I know just many of us really hold him in high regard. And so he had a memorial service at our Lauderdale Memorial Park this weekend. So that was just special and just a wonderful soul gone way too early. And the other-
Did you mention the bridge?
Sorry?
Did you mention the bridge?
I didn't mention it.
Wilton Manners painted one side of the bridge connecting Wilton Manners and Fort Lauderdale in dedication to former Mayor Flippin.
Yeah, yeah, I heard about that. It's awesome. Yeah. And I think, Mayor, oh gosh, who was, so I think Justin was maybe lived for a while, and maybe Pembroke Pines or something. But they're looking at changing the name of a street where he lived or was born or at some point to Justin Flippin Way or something like that. So it's another just tribute to him. And then lastly, this, let's see, yesterday, we had the groundbreaking of the Sea Cadet Training Center on, it's off Marina Mile, let's see, 300 Southwest 25th Street. And this has been an amazing effort. Sea Cadets, if for those of you might not know, it's kind of like a Navy JROTC program for future folks in the Navy or Marines, or really any service line. And they have an amazing program, amazing history here in the city of Fort Lauderdale. And the Navy League of the city and others have really been very active in that. The Community Foundation provided a $150,000 grant for this building, and that was matched by community effort and so forth. So it's just amazing. It's going to hopefully open up in, let's see, August, September is the hope. So it's exciting. And I'll let you all know when that is, so you all can join if you'd like to be there and celebrate our high school students who are serving and going to service academies. And we have, I think they have right now 10 folks that are in service academies or going to service academies. So it's a great accolade. Thanks, Mayor.
Oh, very good. Commissioner, you should have also mentioned, I don't know if you did, we did the uncoupling of the hose at fire station-
Oh, yeah. Thanks. Yeah, you go ahead with that, Mayor. Yeah.
Okay, we both dedicated that this past week. It was another addition to our many new fire stations, trying to ensure the safety of our community. So finally, that was open. So very happy to have had that. Attended a number of other meetings. But more importantly, I just want to, I know time is the essence right now. I want, I promised you all that I would report back my findings, which we visited Las Vegas and Los Angeles this past week to kind of follow up with this, the issue of the tunnels and whether or not building a tunnel to put below grade the train tracks as we contemplate doing a commuter rail service between Miami and West Palm Beach. So just to refresh everyone's memory, there is a move afoot to try to establish a commuter rail service on the eastern tracks that the Brightline folks, FEC Railroad, between those two, between those two endpoints, Miami and West Palm Beach, they would establish-
Excuse me, Mayor. Can you speak a little louder, please?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks.
And to add a number of commuter lines during the course of the day, perhaps another 30 or 40 trains during the course of the day, mostly during rush hour, peak hours. And so we all realize that that would be a problem, especially for the east-west traffic, not only on the river, but also on our main arteries such as Broward Boulevard and Sunrise Boulevard. Florida Department of Transportation had suggested building a bridge through the city. And just looking at the sketches and the renderings, I thought it would be a terrible thing just to cut our city in half with a bridge, 55, the base would be 55 feet. And that's when I started making proposals for a tunnel. This was about a year and a half ago when the discussion began. And the Florida Department of Transportation pushed back on that idea, saying that it would be too costly. They gave us a back-of-the-napkin estimate of a billion dollars a mile. We're looking at a three-mile tunnel. And so a lot of us were skeptical of that estimate. We did some independent investigation with some traditional tunnel diggers and found the price to be significantly less. But then comes Elon Musk and his Boring Company, who's indicated that they could build a tunnel for far less money than even the, than the ones that we had investigated. So we decided to, as you know, we decided to take matters in our own hand and to go out to Las Vegas where they have prototype tunnel, as well as in Los Angeles where they built their initial tunnel, to kind of figure out what it was they were talking about, what it is that they're capable of doing. So we have a small PowerPoint presentation. Do you see it on your screen? Okay. Where the tunnel project basically started out, and, well, these are the participants. It was myself, the City Manager, Scott Wyman, the Vice Mayor of Broward County, Michael Udine, Derek Chan, who's the Broward County Director of Rail and Capital Programs, Hussein Cumber, who's Chief Strategy Officer for Florida East Coast Industries, as well as an executive with, can't think of the name of the holding, Fortress Holding Company, and Michael Segalas, who's the Executive Vice President for Rail Infrastructure at Brightline Trains. So Elon Musk invented this Boring Company and this new methodology for drilling tunnels. He was frustrated with the Los Angeles traffic and decided it was a better way of doing things. So in one of the Los Angeles suburbs, in Hawthorne, he completed a one-mile test tunnel in 2018 for a cost of $10 million. And so we visited that tunnel. And essentially, what it is, is a 12-foot wide tunnel, which is built with a boring machine. And what it does is, as you cut through the earth, it opens the pathway. And at the same time, they install concrete interlocking plates which support the structure going forward, so that, so that the end of the process, you have a completed tunnel. And in his, in his business plan, he, before we go to Las Vegas, let's just go back to the previous slide. His business plan contemplates traveling through the tunnel with vehicles, Tesla vehicles, with drivers, getting from point A to point B. And that's why the 12-foot diameter is considered sufficient in order to allow cars to travel through that. So they did do one tunnel in Hawthorne. Then we moved on to Las Vegas. What they did in Las Vegas was they created a, they created two tunnels. And again, it was a prototype tunnel. It's a little under a mile. And they also built three stations, one at each end and one in the center. The idea there is to create a tunnel pathway between their airport and their newly expanded convention center. They have one of the largest convention centers in the world. And, but they also have significant amount of traffic going to and from that area. The idea was to capture the convention goer at the airport and have him get into a car. And they would have a series of vehicles traveling through these tunnels. And in the case of Las Vegas, they had two tunnels, one in each direction, in order to accommodate the traffic flow. So as you see from the bottom slide there, that's pretty much an accurate rendering of a vehicle coming through the tunnel. And we were given a demonstration of that project while we were out there. Keep in mind that the total project of the two tunnels plus the three stations was $45 million for one mile in each direction. So again, those numbers are significantly less than what the, what FDOT proposed. But there are other things that, you know, we have to talk about because we're not talking about cars going through a tunnel. In our case, we're talking about trains going through the tunnel. So the next slide, please. So this was another project that they, that they're currently involved with. This is in San Bernardino. We did not go there, but they are moving forward with trying to do a similar type of vehicular, vehicular pathway underground from point A to point B, which is part of their metropolitan area of Los Angeles MetroLink. Continue. So what we did was, we met with Mike Jansen, who's the Executive Director for Public Works of the City of Las Vegas, to talk to him about, like, is this real? What really happened here? And what are you planning to do ultimately? And what we discovered was that the city of Las Vegas and the county of, what is it?
Clark County.
Clark County. They're, they're going to take this concept, and they're going to increase the one-mile tunnel to 15 miles. They're going to have a 15-mile loop running throughout their city, going from hotel to hotel and into their downtown, and ultimately create this complete underground transfer system through the use of, at the moment, vehicles that are, that have drivers, but ultimately driverless vehicles as they progress forward in this project. I believe that the county last week voted on it and is planning to move forward with the project. We also met with Steve Hill, who's the Chief Executive Officer and President of the Las Vegas Convention Center. They are the ones that funded this program and the initial project. And again, we got his feedback as to the viability. And all they did was have praise for the project and really excited about the prospects moving forward. We also met with Steve Davis, who's actually the President and CEO of the Boring Company, as well as his staff members. We met with them a week ago Friday. So we continued to meet with various other people throughout the, throughout the visit. And there we are standing in the middle of the tunnel. You notice it's a red light. They have any light you want, and they could do a light show throughout your, throughout the drive from point A to point B. So here we go. There was some initial hesitancy in Las Vegas because Musk had never built an underground transit system before, and no one could imagine that a tunnel could be built at a cost of less than $10 million- at a cost of less than $10 million a mile in less than a year and a half. So the Boring Company took that on as a challenge and created Las Vegas as one of their signature projects. Local officials in the area business community expressed strong support for what the Boring Company has accomplished with the casinos lining up to pay for the construction of separate stations that would stop at their properties. Keep in mind, the tunnel itself was $10 million a mile. But the stations, because there were three stations that added to the cost, that's why the total cost of the project was $45 million. So why is this important? This is important because there's a breakthrough in technology in how we, how we design and engineer and build tunnels. The technology that, that the Boring Company has been able to accomplish is excavate the hole, remove the dirt, install those concrete segments is something that the Boring Company has, has invented. It's 15 times faster as a result than the traditional boring technology. We also had a chance to visit their SpaceX facility, which was right there in Hawthorne. We got to see the assembly line for their new rocket ship. Keeping in mind that here you have a, here you have a company that was told they'll never be able to send a rocket up in space. And now they're the only ones sending rockets up in space in order to distribute satellites throughout the upper, the upper atmosphere. And they're doing it at a fraction of the cost. The Boring Company machinery operates on electric power rather than diesel, allowing the equipment to operate longer and without having to ventilate the tunnel. And there is vertical integration through the use of in-house engineering, construction, incentivizing project managers to keep the costs down and to work on schedule. This, these are just testimonials by Steve Hill, the CEO of the Las Vegas Convention Center. And this is the gentleman who is the General Manager of the Strat Resort. Everyone extremely excited about the technology and the, and the possibilities of where this would lead. Continue. So, so the commuter rail plan that we've been talking about, it would be to construct a three-mile tunnel that runs underneath from just north of 13th Street, go under Sunrise Boulevard, go under Broward Boulevard, go under the New River, and go just past Davie Boulevard in the south. The proposal accommodates a relaunch of Brightline service along with the startup of the Coastal Link Commuter Rail with minimal community impacts. Benefits include easing traffic congestion caused by train crossings on the key east-west corridors and allowing for unimpeded maritime traffic to the western boatyards. The options offered by FDOT are bridges up to 80 feet and 8,000 foot long and would be 8,000 feet long, which is about a mile and a half. That would be similar to the 17th Street Causeway or the Miami River Crossing Bridge. You can see right-hand side, that would be the size of the train tunnel, which is going to be 24 feet wide and versus the bridge which you see at the bottom, which would be built right through the middle of our city. So here are some questions that were asked. How can you put a train underground considering Florida's high water table? First of all, there were already two tunnels, one in Fort Lauderdale and one in Miami. But very interesting, the Boring Company in Las Vegas officials say the tunneling work there dealt with similar issues. Las Vegas, despite its desert surroundings, has a high water table. In fact, their one-mile tunnel that they built in Las Vegas is completely submerged in water. So they're already familiar with high water tables. Next slide, please. Some wondered if the Boring Company's low cost and quick turnaround would hold up as it pursues projects beyond the initial Vegas venture. Environmental review in Florida for a rail tunnel may not be as easy and simplistic as that in Nevada for a tunnel used by electric cars. The Boring Company would build a tunnel shell for commuter rail. The cost of installing rail tracks and renovating the Fort Lauderdale station would be extra. A commuter rail tunnel will have a larger diameter than the Vegas tunnel for Tesla. So a boring machine on the right side would need to be built and that would add to the cost. And the ventilation, the fire and life safety standards would be more complex and costly for a rail tunnel versus a tunnel used by electric cars. The connector, so these are some, these are some, so that, so basically, we went there just to see if they could build us a train tunnel. And, and the consensus was that that would be no problem for them. They would build a boring machine that would accommodate the 24-foot diameter that's necessary. It'd be two tunnels and they would be built during, for the three-mile distance. And they figured they could actually complete the boring of the, of the actual tunnels in less than six months. There are other applications. We talked about building a connector between the International Airport, the Convention Center and downtown Fort Lauderdale. We talked about a connector between the beach and, and the downtown. For example, we have a Brightline station. The Brightline station has a parking garage, which is, which is, which is underutilized. Imagine a visitor coming to Fort Lauderdale either by train or by car, stopping at the Brightline station and taking a ride under, underground all the way down La Solis and, and arriving at the drop-off portico that we just built. Where families and, and both, both local families that live in the county and those visiting the area could come to our Fort Lauderdale beach and completely eliminate the traffic that they would otherwise encounter on La Solis and Broward Boulevard, and at the same time, not add to the traffic because this would be a conveyance that would, that would be separate and apart from anything that would take place above ground. So these, I just listed a few other possible applications. I mean, when you start to think about it, there's so many places that we could put a tunnel in, in, in and around our city. And, and it's just an exciting proposition. Keeping in mind that all of this is at a fraction of what FDOT had originally proposed. And so we came back with feeling really good about it. The FEC Railroad people walked away extremely excited about it, knowing that, that the possibilities were clearly before us and that the opportunity was definitely one to take advantage of. The county representative also realized that there's an opportunity here. And overall, we feel that the, that having this, this concept and this technology as a possibility for the future of our city is something that we should really seriously consider. And, and that's the end of my report. So anyway, I will send a packet to you that, that Boring Company has given to us. And, and any other questions that you have tonight or at any point in time? You know, Chris came with us, so he'd be happy to share with you any of that information. And there we are at the end of the trip. So do you have any questions, Commissioner Maritas?
No, but that's very exciting. I'm excited about it. So thank you for researching this possibility and taking the trip and bringing it back to us.
All right, great. Vice Mayor?
I, I echo that. It's very exciting. And I really like the way we're looking at not just what was going to be a bridge downtown by the campus, but I like the fact that we're also looking at other applications and maybe other ways to move folks and traffic, whether it's the beach, downtown, sunrise. So I think it's all great, very exciting. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner McKenzie?
It sounds good. I just hope the, the numbers are good because, you know, again, I work in construction.
I know.
And no one here, no one here can tell me that, you know, it's, it's cheaper. And I know he is a, he is a person that can get things done. But, you know, it's like talking to lawyers, right? You know?
That was the reason for going to Las Vegas, to see, to see it actually having, you know, something being done. And, and we asked, we asked the Convention and Visitors Bureau representative, you know, what, what, what kind of check are you going to have to write for this? And he said, for the one-mile tunnel, it's actually two tunnels, one in each direction, and the three stations is $45 million. And that is a significant drop from what we were originally told. So I'm with you on that.
Oh, the numbers to me blow me out of the water. But, you know, until they part in the Red Sea.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, the New River.
I know.
But no, it's exciting. I want to, I want to find out more. And I commend you on, on your efforts to look at other alternatives.
Commissioner Sorensen, you have any thoughts?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. This is awesome. Very exciting. Thank you for your work. Any discussion on the possibility of freight on there?
Yes. So that's a dicey issue. We're going to try to make efforts to move the freight to the western tracks. And also, you know, the, the gradient of, the gradient of a tunnel has to be more gentle than, than regular passenger train.
Right, yep.
As the, and I, one of the ideas of having a longer tunnel, like the three-mile tunnel, is to allow for that. So that's going to be part of the calculation. Should freight ultimately be allowed to go through the tunnel? We're, we're going to talk about how we can adjust the slope so that it would be adequate for, to accommodate the freight train. So, but it's a good point that you raise.
All right, great. Yeah, because that would be just incredible if we were able to accommodate passenger and freight together. So, okay. Mayor, thank you. Great.
All right, great. Thank you so much. So it's exciting. And I'll keep you apprised of things as they, as they should happen. And, and, you know, we'll come back with some more concrete information as we, as we start putting, the good thing is we've got, we've got, you know, the fact that Vice Mayor Udine came on the trip. And, you know, he's very, very supportive of this. And so we've heard from other members of their commission. And furthermore, the fact that the head of construction for the railroad company walked away from this, you know, extremely excited. And since it is there, you know, it's on their property, it's on their tracks. And, you know, they're looking at some, a lot of, a lot of opportunities that they can take advantage of as well. So, so it's a game changer for our city. And, and I think we're, we're going to be a, an example that others will want to follow. So we have to really move forward quickly before the secret gets out.
Hey, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Much pertaining to this, as it is to who you mentioned was on the trip. You said the, the railroad, the Brightline folks, right?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm just curious, I was riding by City Hall and in some of that land that we swapped for the expansion and the retail and all this, I see a for-sale sign there.
Right.
And I know we're trying to do some creative things right in that little area.
Well, there's several of their parcels that are just next to our City Hall are, are going to be, are putting, I think they're being put on the market already.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Our old parking lot, our old, um, um, police investigations area was there. So I'm just, I mean, we, we spent a lot of time swapping them to make something happen. And now they have a for-sale sign on it.
Well, I think, but I think we're, we can move forward with our, you know, like our joint government center and things like that. We can move forward without that land now. And, but if one of the parcels works into our tunnel project, you know, we'd be, we'd be talking with them. I think, in fact, in our discussions, we talked, we talked to them about it. And they may have to forego selling one of the parcels if we decide to move forward with one of these tunnel projects. Like, let's say we decide to do a tunnel project between the Brightline station and the, and the La Solis, the, going down the La Solis corridor and, and going to the beach, which I think is a, which would be a great, great option for our community. You know, we may need some of that real estate in order to accommodate that. So it's, it's still, you know, the price is very high. I don't see anyone running to buy it right now. So, but they do know that that's, you're correct. That is still in the mix and is still part of the conversation. All right, any further business? So we have a closed-door session. So I guess, is there any more business of the afternoon meeting?
CRA?
Is there any more business of the?
No, I'll forego a report today.
So Congress meeting is now concluded. It is now at 15:00. Let's do the closed-door session now. Okay. So we're going to go into the closed-door session. Those of you on the commission who are, who are attending virtually, close the door behind you. Make sure, you can only allow your cats and dogs.
Yes, people have...